Yeah, I got six, okay. All right, please silence your cell phones, devices, et cetera, so we can have a good meeting. So, six o'clock, I call this meeting a Saginaw City Council order. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Item number two is the invocation for that, our good friend Pastor Dennis Hudson. Welcome, sir.
Thank you for letting me be here. Also, thank you for the great training grain. That was awesome. I don't know who all did it, but you did a great job, and I appreciate it. But I'm here to pray, not talk about a great job. Yeah, I know, I know who did it. I was... Anyway, let's pray. Yes, it was. No. Father, we do want to come this evening and say thank you for the beautiful day. Lord, we thank you that we have different seasons to remind us of good things. We have cool weather, we have hot weather. Lord, we have allergy seasons. We don't like those, but Lord, they're there for a reason. We thank you, the ragweed's only around temporarily. But Father, we also want to thank you for this great city and for the Training Grain Festival and how well it went. We want to thank you that things like this are planned to help people. Help people have a good time, help people to grow and mature in the city. Lord, I want to thank you for the firemen and the policemen that show up at emergencies, like the one we had yesterday. We just appreciate their dedication and service. We ask you would bless them and watch over them and protect them. Lord, I thank you for this council and their guidance. Running a city is a tough job. There's so many things that are so difficult. For that reason, Father, we do ask for your wisdom. Without it, we could create a real mess. And Father, I just thank you for the time to do business. We need guidance, we need decisions that lead us forward, and this group does that. And for that, we're grateful, and we praise you for that. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
Item number three is audience participation. That is covered on the screen. If there's an item you wish to speak about on the agenda, please see the city secretary. You can fill out a form. We can only discuss items that are listed on the published agenda. Item number four is the consent agenda. I have had a request to remove or to pull D for further discussion. Any other items need to be pulled? All right. All right, then, consent agenda A, action regarding maintenance of September 21st. B, action regarding amendment to our local agreement for Tarrant County for Bailey Bowser overpass. C, action regarding recommendation for purchase of season on Christmas lights. Skipping to E. Which one? G is in go? Yes, sir. E is in action regarding execution of advanced funding agreement with Texas Department of Transportation. F, action regarding authorization of amendment number one to individual project order with Kimmy Horn and Associates. H, action regarding acceptance of a water sewer facility easement for Saginaw Spring Creek Property Partnership. And I, action regarding purchase of one 2022 Chevrolet Colorado pickup truck for Inspection Department.
Mayor, I remembered F is also the one I'd like to have pulled as well.
Which one?
F.
F? All right, so I've got D, F, and G being pulled. Is that correct? Okay. So then, I will entertain a motion for A, B, C, E, H, and I.
May I make a motion? Consent agenda A, B, C, E, H, and I.
Thank you. All is in favor, raise your right hand. Let the record reflect, we have a quorum this evening. All right, let's move to D, action regarding aquatic center repairs. Keith Reinhardt, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is... We came to you earlier this summer with, sorry, damages that we sustained during the winter freeze, February. And that dollar figure, as I said at that time, was, I think the total for the city was quite a bit, but it was around in the 90,000 range just for the Aquatic Center. And the city's portion of that was the $250 deductible. And that's still the case. What this is tonight is staff was asked to get a cost quote on basically taking care of what we have. Our facility has not been open for two years. Two years or two summers ago, it wasn't open due to COVID. This last summer, it wasn't open because of the winter damage that we had and getting contractors out here to take care of it. It's not something where just your friend is a works-for-a-pool-company-type-of-thing, can come out and take care of it. It's a commercial-grade company that takes care of places like Great Wolf Lodge and... Name a big water park-type facility. That's what they do. It's not... They don't take care of residential. There's a market for that, and they're not in that market. They take care of commercial grade, which is what we have. And what this is, is different aspects of, you know, trying to get the facility looking nice again and taking care of some damage that has been needed to be taken care of. And the dollar figure is, was, I think, about 99,590. And again, that's to make things, one, polished up and look right, but also take care of maintenance issues, damage issues, so not related to the storm. Glad to answer any questions.
So, first of all, I appreciate what you guys do, trying to keep, you know, all of this. There's a lot of things at the Rec Center and Aquatic Center that need to stay running, and you're always in competition with the elements. And that's completely understood. I was a little shocked that, and again, I've been gone quite a bit this summer taking care of family issues, that... This was a surprise to me in some regards. And it would have been nice, you know, had we been notified that we were expecting some major, major renovations to the Aquatic Center or any other facility that we have to deal with, even though we couldn't budget that particular item. Because that's a significant amount of money.
Some good news, if I may interject, some good news of that dollar figure. And in your package, you have the quote from DCC, which is the commercial pool company. Some of the good news is, is when they start doing the work, if they see some of the work was damaged by the storm, then that will be relayed.
Okay. That is good to hear.
For that.
But we don't know how.
But we don't know, we don't know that. The other surprise is that we don't know is because, you know, for so long, we didn't have water. Not just the residents didn't have water, and neither did the city. And the Aquatic Center hasn't had water for quite some time, because we have eight 10-inch pipes that are cracked, and we can't turn on the water. We can, but it'll make a quite a different water feature that we're not wanting to, you know.
Are you sure?
So, the other surprise could be is once we get everything that's fixed, that's related to the insurance, once everything is taken care of, once we flip that switch, turn the water on, we don't know what's going to happen. Meaning, we don't know what's hidden, because we haven't been able to turn the water on and see what else is...
And I understand that. But I'm just saying, you know, here's another $100,000 that we weren't expecting in our budget. And again, I understand, if you don't have an estimate, it's really kind of hard to give a ballpark figure.
We wish we had a maintenance staff in our department, but we don't.
Right.
You're looking at him.
Yeah.
And if I can't do it, I call DCC.
And along with all your other hats that you wear. So, that's no reflection on anything that you've done. The second thing is, is are we already planning to look for lifeguards so we can open this summer?
Well, not in October. That's a little early. Generally, we start that process in January. In October, thinking back to when I was the age of being a lifeguard, work in general was not on my list of things to think about. And I'm going to guess that that's probably similar to a lot of our college age and high school kids, which is where our guards come from. So, and October's not the time when we're doing that. That generally starts up in January. So, yeah, the plan would be, once everything gets repaired, taken care of, is to open up next summer if we can, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're on board to make sure we get lifeguards lined up so we can open up. Because I know that, I understand that they were few and far between, so...
Part of it was COVID-related.
Right. But my husband said they, last spring, they were training 60 lifeguards a year, every weekend. I mean, they were training 60 lifeguards every weekend for a couple of months over at Tarleton. So, you might want to drop something in over there and say, "We're looking." All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Sure.
I have a question. So, the re... This is not part of the replaster that we approved before? Or did it already get replastered, the pool?
That is correct.
And that's already done?
No, it hasn't been done yet. They haven't started the work. They're actually going to start probably... They're doing... The people that are doing the repairs, insurance-related repairs, would be, are the exact same people that are going to be doing the, if this is approved.
So, the replaster's part of the insurance claim?
That, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. So, if we do, if we are able to save some money, then we'll be able to do the cleaning of the deck and all of that stuff, if we can save this.
The, again, it's another one of those little surprise things with the deck, is when they came out and surveyed what the deck is. Our deck surface is the type of surface where we can't drain the pool at the end of the summer. We have to keep water in it, because if we don't, it'll start to buckle and start to, it'll come up. That's bad. The problem is, is because over time, since, what, February, when the storm happened, we haven't been able to run water. And the water has evaporated during that time, and the water level has gone down and gone away from that zero-grade area. So, there's been some deck that's been exposed, and it's starting to bubble up, which is not good.
Are we still going to have to do some cleaning and stuff in that pool, evicting turtles and ducks and stuff like that?
There's no telling what we'll find. It'll be entertaining.
So, on this, I mean, I'm sure, we're talking about two different things. One is, we're talking about the damage that was done for the storm, and we'll work through that with the insurance company. And I understand it's like a golden onion. As we clean up, we will find it. But the second part, what I thought we were proving today, and I had walked through with you, and I got this whole list of things that we said we need to do, not we, you, that the city needs to do. What I'm trying to do is take this sheet and match up what am I getting for that $20,000, plus or minus a few hundred dollars. And that's where I'm struggling here, of course. I don't, I don't know. Okay, so, we sign off on this $20,000, is this maintenance list you got, I mean, I hand it over to you. Is everything on here fixed?
Is everything fixed?
Yeah.
No, that's what we're asking to get fixed. Some of the things that, a lot of the things that are on this list, not the insurance list, the list that I'm presenting tonight, was, right. Right, right after, when you became a council member, and we took you on a tour, and we showed you this and that, here's Russ there, and this door's about to fall in, that's on there.
So, if we approve this today, that list you gave me, that this, the $20,000 covers all of this?
What's the $20,000?
Unless there's anything, any surprises.
What is this $20,000?
Well, it's, no, there was 80, 80, 80-some thousand, right, originally for the maintenance. Now, it's 99,000. It was my understanding that the differential was the maintenance. It'd been nicer if those were kept totally separate. That's why I asked the question. I'm just trying to figure out, for $20,000, what am I getting? Am I getting everything on this sheet?
Should be, yes. Except for any surprises that we're unaware of. Yeah.
Do you want this sheet to double-check it, or?
Sure, I may have it somewhere, but sure.
Yeah, you're the one who gave it to me.
I just don't have it with me at the moment, so, yeah. All I have is what I was presenting tonight.
Any other questions on D? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve item D.
May I make a motion that we approve item D on the consent agenda as presented?
All is in favor, raise your right hand. I think you're moving forward. Item number, item letter F. Action regarding authorization of amendment number one of individual project order with Kimmy Horn. For that, Rick tries.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is an expansion of IPO that we approved, or that you approved, back in January. It, the purpose for the pump station at Park Center is to boost delivery and pressure, basically to serve the northwest area of town. We also had a similar issue with belt mill that we discovered as they were looking at multi-story apartment complex, the grand, that you approved, site plan and final platform. Those requirements for fire protection were, I guess, beyond what we had anticipated. So, we are designing based on that criteria, went back and looked at the Park Center design, and decided it would be prudent to go ahead and up the size of those pumps. And that becomes an unraveling sweater, the site plan gets changed, the building gets changed because of the greater, or the larger-sized pumps that are being designed. And so, this IPO will cover the cost of that additional design or redesign in some areas. I think, of course, Andrew can add to that, if you have any questions for him, so...
Any questions, Council?
What's the minimum water pressure we must maintain?
So, the state minimum pressure you have to maintain is 35 PSI. And so, you know, the city has that across the board at ground level. The reason these projects became necessary is they were looking to put in three-story apartment complexes in the northwest part of the city where you have your lowest water pressure. So, those businesses up there today, they have the state minimum, they're good. They are lower than, say, you know, the east side of town. But whenever we started looking at those three-part, three-story apartment buildings is when we knew we were going to be below that minimum, and we had to boost that pressure.
Yeah, so you lose water pressure as you elevate, so...
So, I thought that there was a fund that these apartments or anybody who builds pays into to cover costs like this. So, would this come out of that?
Yeah, yeah, so this... Go ahead.
Right. The belt, the pump station at Park Center will be funded out of impact fee funds.
Yeah.
And then, the belt mill would be eligible reimbursement. So, that project, I think the belt mill is going to be advertised December 1st, so we'll get some better numbers on that project.
Other questions on F?
Yeah. Did we not know about the three-story apartments when we first did this agreement?
We knew about the three-story apartments, but we didn't have a handle on what the criteria might be. So, I mean, that's, that's a number that changes and fluctuates with new design criteria. So, when we had discussions again with the belt mill folks, you know, we decided it would be the best prudence to go ahead and up our design.
Mr. Mayor.
So...
One, 1.2, when Belt Mill was initially plotted, there was some thought that we would connect Fort Worth to the north to get into a main there. And then, the Water Department of Fort Worth said no, that we would have to make do with what was available. So, that's why the pump station's planned.
And is that station going to be large enough to handle any additional residences or nateriums that may happen to come across?
Yes, ma'am. So, both stations are being designed to serve both the domestic water supply, so what you use at your house, and also fire protection. And so, the fire protection is so large that that kind of, you know, so much larger than that domestic demand, that whatever domestic demand will come in from like a naterium or any large irrigation can be covered by our fire flow pumps that we're putting in.
Any other questions on F? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion that we approve consent agenda, item F, as presented?
Charlie second. All is in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Rick. Item G, action regarding appointment of city representative to the fiscal year 2022 Fort Worth Wholesale Water and Wastewater Committee. Rick tries.
As you may know, Saginaw gets its water supply from the city of Fort Worth. So, we pay wholesale rates for water and sanitary sewer treatment. So, as part of that, in our contract, there is a committee that's set up, that's all of the city of Fort Worth's customer cities, which are 60 or 70 customer cities. And we meet quarterly with the Fort Worth Water Department. And, you know, it has value in that we see what the trends are, the regulatory trends on the state and national realm. I've sat on that committee since I got here. Dolph has previously sat on that committee. Randy Newsom, our operations superintendent and assistant director, is an alternate for me, and he sits on that committee. But anyway, it's required that we appoint or reappoint those representatives annually. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
So, my question was, since we know you're retiring, I didn't think you should be the one that should be appointed if Randy is...
I'm not out the door yet, councilmember.
I mean, I don't know, I mean...
He's throwing dirt on you already, Rick.
I thought it should be Randy should be the main, and then someone alternate after them. Because if you leave in May, or, you know, then we're just going to have an alternate and not...
Well, Randy would step up clearly in the representative. So, hopefully, nothing happens to Randy over the next year, but...
So, I was just thinking that, I didn't think, I didn't think you should be appointed as the main. I thought Randy should be, and then somebody else. That's why I wanted that pulled. Because you're leaving, or something like that.
I'd like to attend for, you know, a couple more meetings.
I'd say as long as Rick's here, he needs to be the man, be the guy. Once he leaves, then we can, we can cross...
But then we'll go through this again.
Well, and on the resolution, it says Randy is the alternate anyhow, so...
Right, but after, I mean, Randy will be, right, so who would be the alternate then?
You can make an appointment at that time. You don't have to wait till the next year.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't even know that you need to make an appointment at that time. I mean, it's just, they ask for it annually. So, Randy would be the man from May on, so...
Right. That's why, I understand Randy would be the man, but then who would be the alternate then?
Yeah.
That was my question.
I believe Randy has a choice.
Yeah, I've been here four years, and Randy hasn't had to fill in for me yet, so hopefully, that's the same case with Randy.
Okay.
Are any other questions on G?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
As Saginaw grows, are we able to have more voting privileges, more voting members on this committee?
It's really not a, an action committee. It's more of a, just a, I guess, just having a relationship with, you know, customer, as a customer city. So, there, we...
So, every city just has a single voting member, no matter how large it is?
They're all treated equally, yes.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on G? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, G as presented, and let Rick be it for a while?
Mary second. All is in favor, raise your right hand. Of course, thank you. Thank you, Rick. Moving forward, item number five, recognition of emergency coordinator Joe Lasser and Texas Municipal League 2021 Municipal Excellence Award for the city's Saginaw public safety. Hurrah! So, it's me. So, two weeks ago, we were all down in Houston for the Texas Municipal League. That's the big city conference. We flew down early. We canceled our council meeting that night, because several of us went, a delegation went. Because Wednesday morning, we received a very important award. There's, they give out a lot of awards at TML. It's category of under 25,000 population or over 25,000. So, we're just barely under, at least for now. So, we won the award for public safety. And that is primarily due to the work of Mr. Joe Lasser, our new, our new, he's not new, our emergency services coordinator, been around a couple of years. If you don't know, it's a partnership with Lake Worth, so it's a pretty cool collaborative effort, so they awarded both cities. I don't know, anybody else gave anything you want to say on this? Because I'm not doing it justice, but...
No, it's always nice to be recognized. And as you mentioned, thanks to Joe's good work. He's been hanging around fire chiefs, both in Fort Worth, or, excuse me, in Lake Worth and Saginaw, so he's sporting the mustache. So, it may have helped us push us over the edge for the award. But you may recall, in the past couple of months, we had a preparedness fair. He coordinated that, both in Saginaw and Lake Worth. He's universally loved and well-respected, and likely has a future as an elected official, so thank you, sir.
Chief Spears, you want anything you want to add to this?
Just really quickly, it was a position both cities desperately needed. Joseph was a good choice. He's exceeded expectations, so we're going to keep him around.
All right, so, I'm going to get this award, and I'm going to be real careful, because it's very fragile. I was careful handling it earlier, so you all can see what it looks like. Here's the award. Very nice. I think we're going to get Joe up here, and we're going to take a couple of pictures, right? Maybe Joe and the chief. Who else want to get in?
I'd also like to add that Joe has been essential in reviving the CERT organization here in Saginaw, and he's expanded that to Northwest Tarrant County. When are we going to get a trophy case to start putting all these beautiful awards in?
My suggestion was, how about the new fire department? The new fire, maybe a nice big trophy case there. But for now, it's going to stay in this box, so I don't hurt it.
I bet that can... Yeah, but we got other awards, too, that need to be displayed. Right, Ms. Quinn?
All right, thank you, Joe. Thank you all. Item number six, update on retail recruitment effort. For that, our French, the Retail Coach.
Real quick, Mayor, just wanted to introduce, last week, we had an opportunity with bringing back our local business forum. And we had Aaron Farmer, the president of the Retail Coach, come and speak to a group of businesses and individuals, and staff, and council. And very informative about kind of what's going on in Saginaw as far as economic development and trends and recruitment and such. And tonight, we wanted to do that, to present to the public and to everyone in the room, to kind of let them know what's going on. Aaron couldn't make it tonight, so his top hand, Carrie Everett, is with Retail Coach, and he'll do a good job. Thanks, sir.
Good evening, Council. Carrie Everett with the Retail Coach here. Just wanted to go over a few things of the progress that we've had, some things coming up in 2021, and what we're doing behind the scenes to recruit some retail. So, some of you may have seen this map here before. This is the Saginaw retail trade area. So, what we do to determine this is we run some cellphone data on the city of Saginaw, determine where the majority of the consumers are coming from. And with that, we'll hand draw a map around that area. And based off of this map, we'll run data demographics to determine who all makes up that area and who the main consumers are for Saginaw. Here, you'll see some of the 2021 data that we ran, broken down between the population, the educational attainment, income, age, race distribution. That 637 up there that you see is the difference in population from our data in 2020 to 2021. And you see the projection out to 2026, putting that trade area over 100,000. The incomes as well have increased over 3,000 on the average household income, excuse me. So, these are obviously positive numbers. All retailers like to see that there's some growth happening, both in the population and the incomes. These are our key metrics that we use during our process in recruiting restaurants, retail, and different users. Coming up for 2021, some of the new things that we have implemented. Previously, we were using what's called a retail leakage analysis, and what that showed was... using what's called a retail leakage analysis, and what that showed was the dollars that are actually leaving the city of Saginaw and being spent elsewhere. We've adjusted that a little bit, and now we are using a retail demand outlook. So this is going to show the demand, future demand, in the city of Saginaw and in the trade area moving forward. So the leakage analysis had a little bit of a negative connotation to it. The demand is going to show where that growth is, is needed to be had from a retail and restaurant perspective. A little bit of that, it's a little small here, but this is a piece of that information. We've gone through and analyzed around eighty different sectors and broken that up. And it's going to show the 2020, the 2021 current demand, what we expect in five years, the difference in that growth, and it's broken down all into the, the sectors there. Here, towards the bottom, if you can see it, the, the dining and restaurants down towards the bottom there, we're expecting upwards of thirty million dollars in demand in five years. So that's obviously also key when we're going out recruiting restaurants, showing that there's going to be a future demand for those to thrive in the market here. We've also added some new software. So we are now using a, a new retailer matching analysis. What this is going to do is take into consideration the demographics and the trade area and outfill a list of retailers, restaurants, any sort of business user, and grade them on a scale from A to F of the best fits for the market. So what that's going to allow us to do is really broaden that list of prospects that we've initially been recruiting for, allow us to go after a few additional ones and continue to, to get their feedback. So we're actively going through that list right now and adding new retailers and restaurants to that list, and should have that done here in the next week or so to continue our recruitment efforts from there. Our recruitment strategy, so part of that is getting that updated retailer match list, adding some new retailers on there, doing our phone and email outreaches directly to them on a regular basis, making sure that the most recent data for Saginaw is in front of these restaurants and retailers often, and just really keeping Saginaw on the radar for most of those. We're also working, continuing to work on getting meetings set up with brokers and developers for, for some of these prospects, also working on getting them out here to Saginaw to look at the different sites and developments that are, that are upcoming. So that's just kind of whole, the whole plan of the recruitment strategy is to really funnel those, those prospects into the city and making sure that, that they have everything updated as far as data and sites and updates on the developments that are coming. A few other things that we're doing, and I'll talk a little bit more about this, is the trade shows. So of course, there's the ICSC Conference and then the Retail Live Trade Shows. So we're going there and representing the city of Saginaw on your behalf, talking directly to these retailers and restaurants, their brokers and tenant reps and different folks like that, having face-to-face meetings with them. So those are, those are really vital in making sure that we're, we're actively having success recruiting. And I know Aaron has been in direct contact with, with Keith pretty regularly, on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, updating him on the progress that's being made. So of course, we'll, we'll continue to do that as well. One of the things that I always get asked when I'm going through recruitment is, hey, we're interested in the market, the data, the demographics look good, but what sites do you have for us? So we build out, we go out, we come into the community, analyze the sites that are there, and continue to keep those updated so that we can send some of those out to the interested parties. So a few of those to list would be the square there near, near Walmart, the UCD Development, Levon White Property, and, and a handful of others that were actively helping to recruit retailers and restaurants, too. Back to some of the trade shows. So we were at Retail Live in Austin in September, where we represented Saginaw, had a lot of good meetings there. The turnout there was, was fantastic, one of the larger shows attendance-wise that they've had. So definitely nice to be back in front of people face-to-face and getting to, to talk to them as opposed to the virtual Zoom meetings. I'm, I'm pretty sure we're all a little burned out on those. But upcoming here, we do have the ICSC Here We Go Conference in Vegas in December, so we will be attending that and having a presence there. The ICSC Texas Show, they're still working on a date for that, but we definitely plan on attending there as well. And then there is the ICSC Recon, which is the, the large event that they have in Vegas every year, aside from the, the past year with COVID and, and different things like that. So looking forward to that. And, and the Retail Live Conference, again, they, they have these on a yearly basis, so looking forward to attending those as well. So currently, as far as the results of recruitment are concerned, we have ten retailers and restaurants that have requested sites in Saginaw. So we've worked directly with them, kept in touch with them, sent them sites to review. So most of those are running them through their real estate teams, reaching out to franchisees, and trying to, to tie some pieces together there on, on getting them located here. We've also got one hotel interested in Saginaw, so we're keeping in touch with them as well. And some of these, these developments tend, start to, to come online and become available for, for groundbreaking and developments. Until now, I mean, you know, everyone can attest that COVID kind of threw a wrench in a lot of things, and then the, the construction delays as well, kind of hindered the ability to get some of these retailers in, in a much sooner timely manner. But of course, as things start to hopefully return back to normal and, and, and get back on pace, we're going to, we're continuing to stay in, in touch with all of those folks and making sure that they have everything in line and they're ready to, to move when the time is right. We always say retail recruitment and revitalization is a, is a, is a process, not an event. So it's not just a one singul- singularity thing that happens. So through this whole recruitment process with the outreach and these, these trade shows that we're, that we're visiting, we're actively working on continuing that, that recruitment effort. I believe Aaron went to a, a business breakfast last week, and I believe he saw a few of the council members there. So very confident that things are heading in the right direction. We're, we're really happy with where things stand currently and really look forward to, to hitting the accelerator on some of these. So with that, I mean, I know it was a pretty quick, Aaron tends to talk a little bit more than, than I do. So that wraps up the, the presentation for the, the retail and recruitment strategy there.
Any questions for Carrie?
We can. So part of what we can do, this, this kind of plays into like downtown revitalization, is geofencing around certain areas and seeing the traffic patterns based off of cell phone data. Now with that trade area, we outlined the, the city of Saginaw and determined where those, those consumers were coming.
So I'm assuming you divided out into like food, going out to eat, hardware?
So when we do the entire trade area, it encompasses all of those, because we want to see where the majority of each consumer, or where all these consumers are coming from for, for every industry. Of course, if you have a retail or restaurant that is, there's not many locations, people are going to be traveling for that. Now, we can break those into sectors and, and run specific reports on certain restaurants or certain retail industries. So, and I guess in short, we can do that. Now with that data that, that I just showed, it doesn't really encompass a lot of that.
What I'm getting at is we've got multiple years of data now, so we should be able to take that data and determine where our biggest opportunity is.
Right.
We need to focus our most effort.
Yep.
Whether that's a new hardware store or something like that, I don't know.
Yep, and that's, that's what that, that demand report shows.
So where is our biggest, what's our biggest leakage?
Well, I don't have the leakage numbers, but that demand, I think, I mean, a lot of that is in the restaurant sector. I mean, gas stations is always high up there. That was the largest figure on there. But that's, kind of plays into our, our analysis of also the, that grading structure. So once we have that data available, we'll determine kind of where is the best fit, where are the best, or where the, the holes are in the market and go out and fill those. The majority of the, the current prospects that we're looking at are your casual sit-down restaurants. Of course, we've got hotels on there, we've got hardware stores on there, and then also family entertainment is another one that we're, that we're working hard on recruiting for as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just want to mention one thing. Great job, Carrie. Aaron mentioned at the business forum that, that info at theretailcoach.net, he would be willing to run a, a cell phone analysis for our local businesses if they're interested in seeing where their customers are coming from. And in another attempt to keep Rick for another X amount of years, happy to report that although it's taken about three years, that the, the square, the infrastructure, the, the street is finally going through there. So we'll have pad sites. I think you referenced the square that would be prime candidates for sit-down restaurants.
You had to give me a shot, didn't you?
Well, the important, important thing on that is it's, it's freed our, our local business, because we, the city pays for it, so it's already included in our, the fee we paid. So this has freed any local business.
Yep.
So I encourage people to take advantage of it.
Yep, and we're happy to run those reports, yeah, like you said, for, for any business.
So how do, how do you represent Saginaw at these trade fairs? I mean, I'm sure you have other cities.
Right.
I'm just curious of how that works.
Yeah, so ahead of time, we know, we, we tend to know what retailers and restaurants are going to be there. So what we'll do is we'll, you know, several weeks in advance, go through and whatever retailers or restaurants or what have you that we've already identified, we'll actively, you know, work on setting up meetings with them. If you have any representatives that are going to these conferences, like the, the ICSC conferences, we work with, with our contacts throughout the, the industry to set up those meetings on your behalf. We also take your, your trade area data and print it out on a front and back flyer and hand those out to other prospects as well. So those are just kind of a, a couple of ways that we represent you guys there.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just want to interject a, a couple of things. When he's talking, you know, you're asking about leakage and such, and certainly restaurant is, is very high on that list. And, and where we get our information on like who we're trying to reach out for comes from a lot of different areas. It's not just Keith thinking, man, it'd be really cool if we had a this. It's not that at all. We did a, a citizen survey a couple of years ago, where we asked residents, what do you want, type of thing. And, you know, a great example of, of us going off of that list is, is the number three restaurant on that list was Chipotle. Aaron was involved talking with Chipotle to try and recruit them to come here. Now we have a brand new Chipotle on the north end of town, as, as an example. We use that quite a bit off, off that list of, we want, you know, I don't want to mention all the names, because I don't want to leave somebody out. We go off of that, we go off of residents that call and say, hey, man, it'd be really cool if we had a whatever. Or I saw, I saw in this newspaper article, and they send me the newspaper article about this X business is looking at expanding. Doesn't say where, but looking at expanding. Or sometimes it does say expanding in North Texas. We get right on the phone and contact them. Economic development's kind of like throwing darts in the wind. You just keep throwing darts and hope one of them sticks, because not every one of them's going to, because there's, there's so many things that, that get in the way, like, you know, the wind and, you know, over the last two years, y'all have heard me say a lot of what he said today about, you know, COVID being a factor, and it is. And nobody wants to hear that. I don't want to hear it either, but it's, it's the fact. And, and, and we can complain about it all we want, or we can, these, this is what's been given us, and we can do the best we can with what we have. And we, none of us created COVID, none of us did. So we have to do the best we can working around that. And we had people that were interested before COVID, and then they did, well, we didn't want to hear this, but we didn't want to hear that, well, we're going to hold off for a little while and see how this thing pans out. We didn't want to hear that. But on the business side, that's the smartest thing they could have done. And it was a very wise decision on them. But the good thing is now they're, they're ready.
Yep, and to, to kind of piggyback off of what, what Keith said, the recruitment is, is definitely a numbers game, you know, like you said about throwing darts. You know, so we've got, I think, probably a list of thirty to forty retailers right now that we're actively in conversations with. And then that list is going to continue to grow as we, we go through our partnership. Like you said, there's, there's always news coming out about certain retailers or restaurants, either getting bought out by, by a new, a new company and starting their expansion efforts in, in different areas. And another thing, you know, as far as, you know, if someone from the city comes in and says, hey, why don't we have X retailer? What we can do is if, you know, either, you know, you can come straight to myself or Aaron or funnel that through Keith, and we can give you guys specific answers as to why maybe Saginaw isn't a fit for, for certain, certain restaurants or retailers.
Councilmember Big Horse?
I have a couple of questions here. When Aaron was here the last time, he mentioned something that would serve Saginaw well would be unique businesses, restaurants and retail. Are you in pursuit of those types of businesses, or are we looking at chain restaurants and retail?
I would say probably eighty percent of our recruitment efforts are focused around those major chain franchise restaurants. Now, we do go out and survey around the area to see if there's any local restaurants that, or boutiques, or something of that nature that are looking to expand. And again, that's, that's part of that, that list that we're continually working on adding new retailers and restaurants to. So yes, we do, we do go out and, and try to recruit those, you know, maybe few and far between concepts. So that is definitely a part of that.
And what, and to piggyback on that, you know, we go, we do go off the list that the, that the residents gave us and said, we want these type of things. And yeah, they're, they're, like you said, it's about eighty percent of, of the chains. But we're also reaching out to those entertainment destination-type restaurants, too. That's, that is going to attract more than just, you know, the, the flyby. Like I want to, if I want to go, I'm fortunate enough that I live close to a Bab's right now, which is awesome, and I love that. But that's a destination-type restaurant, for example. Before, the one was built in Northridge and Hills, if I, if I wanted Bab's, I got to drive to Roanoke, but I'd do it, because that's a destination to go to. And we're, they, and they are recruiting those type of venues also.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. What about retention? Is that part of what you do? I mean, we lost the Ice Cream Gallery. That was a very, very popular place to just go hang out, to meet up with friends. I don't know if that's part of what you guys do or not, is retention?
Yeah, definitely.
You know, I, I don't want to, I don't want us to lose another mom and pop business.
Yes, exactly. We do, we do definitely want to support those.
So how do, you know, I, I don't know if Ice Cream Gallery could have reached out to you earlier?
They reached out to me, for, for, for example, and I gave them a list of about eight different locations that were available that suited the specifications that they needed. Now, from that point, I'm, because I'm not a real estate agent.
Right.
All I can do is say, here they are. I can't negotiate it. I can't cut a deal and say, I'll, I'll make you deal. I can't, I don't do that. I, I give them, here's the list.
Right.
You, Mr. Ice Cream Gallery, have to decide what's best for you. We can't make that decision for them.
All right. So those ten prospects that you have, is there an anticipated date that we're looking at them coming in ballpark twenty-two, one, twenty-two, twenty-five?
They're all...
Thirty-seven?
Yeah, they're, they're all really at, at different points in the process. Some of them, they're at the early stages of just saying, hey, we want to look at Saginaw. And we've gotten specific sites in front of them to review, and others have had those, those sites and are just kind of waiting for some of these developments to unfold. It's hard to, hard to say and, and give a guarantee. Obviously, there's really nothing guaranteed in, in the, the retail industry there. But our hope is that we're going to have, you know, at least a couple of these fall within the... But our hope is that we're going to have, you know, at least a couple of these fall within the next twelve to eighteen months. Now, of course, it could be a little more. It could be, uh, it could be fewer, but it's kind of hard to say, you know. Strategy changes a lot and, and pretty quickly, it seems. And a lot of time, it's, it's all about timing. So, our goal is to make sure that, that Saginaw is consistently at the top of their radar and making sure that we're going to be one of the, the first stops whenever there's, there's a development that's ready to be.
Okay, well.
We have developments in mul- in multiple different stages, and, and some of them, of course, were stopped by, by COVID. Some of them are turning dirt, like the UCD property. Some of them are, are not quite there yet. And then, like the square, they just got approval for the light so they could build that road, and they're working on that right now. But they're, they're not going to do any work until they can get that done. So, everything is, is delayed. There's even delays with, I don't want to say delays, but where, and this is just an example. You know, property owners have the right to sell the prop- their property for the price that they think is, it's right, or whether it's market value or what they think it's valued at. And if it's much too higher, much higher than what the market is, it doesn't make sense for a business to buy it.
Right.
You have to, you know, we've said this before, you have to have a willing buyer and a willing seller too.
And my last question is this supply chain issue that we're confronted with at this point in time. How do you anticipate that's going to impact bringing businesses into Saginaw?
What I've seen more recently, I haven't heard anybody specifically mention any supply chain issues. One of the biggest things that, that I've heard more recently is, is being able to have the employment and the staff to go forward and to, and to open these new businesses. So, I haven't heard any of that specifically for Saginaw, but we do work all over the country, and that has been a concern. I expect that to somewhat be a driver in, you know, deciding whether they're going to go to a specific area or not. But as far as Saginaw is concerned, I personally haven't, haven't heard any, anything on that front.
Well, and the reason I ask is because I went to Atlanta about three weeks ago, and I kid you not, I stopped in three restaurants, and they served me drinks in glasses smaller than this, and they were either plastic or, I mean, styrofoam or, or paper cups because they didn't have it. And they charged you the regular price for it, even though it was about half the size that you normally got. A lot of them were dealing with food shortages, grocery stores, depending where you go in the country. You know, here, I couldn't find lunch meat for a long time. I went to Atlanta, they couldn't find tomato juice or a Gatorade. Their daughter, the people I was visiting, you know, they couldn't get flour tortillas. That's a crisis here in Texas. But, I mean, it seems like every area that I've talked to is dealing with different shortages of different kinds, and I didn't know if those types of shortages, especially in the food industry, were having an impact on people wanting to open businesses or not. And I understand about the employment thing, yeah, that's big too, but this seems to be a growing problem.
Right. Yeah, like I said, as of late, I've, I've not heard that being a, a deciding factor as to whether they're throttling back on, you know, new development, but.
Could you get back with us?
I can.
If you find out on that? Because I know the cost of food is also creating an issue.
Yep, and, and we're all seeing that.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
In our personal lives.
Oh, Mayor, go ahead.
I spoke to you at your booth at TML.
Yep.
And I told you about that one company that might be interested in coming to Saginaw when one of our mixed-use developments is ready. Then he might be ready. And he was very interested in the way you collect your data. And I think he, that was a new idea to him, and that seemed like a very accurate way to determine your, your customer base.
Yep.
And I did get a card for you from him.
And then, that's another thing. We, we listen to these retailers and restaurants, and we follow those trends of, of what they're looking for and the type of data that they need to make these decisions. And we, we pivot, and we make those changes to, to make sure that we're supplying them with proper data, what they're looking for, and what they like to see. So, that's part of, you know, some of the, some of the new, new things that we're starting to, to change up and, and focus on.
Other questions, council?
Yeah, I have two more. So, do we track, I mean, and can we get, even if there was a non-disclosure, you wouldn't have to give their names, how many companies and stuff reach out to us interested in Saginaw, say, per month? Is there any way we can get that data on a monthly basis, or we have this many reach out? And then the second part is when we have somebody who reaches out to us and says they're interested, and they don't pick Saginaw. Do we go back and figure out why did we lose? Take COVID out of pictures. Everybody's having a fight with that. I'm assuming if they didn't pick us, they didn't pick anybody which were COVID. But out of COVID, why didn't say they go to, go, uh, Golden Triangle? Why didn't they go to Lake Worth? Why didn't they pick Saginaw because they were definitely interested and we just didn't make the cut?
Right.
Do you all do that?
We do keep a tracking spreadsheet that we believe, Keith, you have access to that, right? Okay, yeah, and we do keep a, a tracking spreadsheet. Now, as far as, you know, specific retailers and restaurants, you know, for disclosure reasons, we like to keep that, you know, as private as possible until they get to the point to where, you know, they're ready to announce. And we work with them on that as well. Say, hey, where are you at the position?
And for what I'm getting at, all you need to meditate. You don't need their name. You just need to know building, or company A did not choose Saginaw for the trees. And if you get multiple ones doing it, then we know we got a problem, you know, where to go fix it. So, you know, the next company comes in, you know, that might be the, that might be hindering.
Yep, exactly. We do, that's, that's part of, part of my job, is whenever I'm reaching out to them and say, hey, are you interested in Saginaw? Why or why not? It's hit and miss. Some of them just say, hey, it's not a good fit for us right now. Some of them, you know, may say, well, there's, you know, some things that I've, that I've heard, you know, across the board in several other markets. Maybe there's not enough rooftops yet, population.
You should give us the top three then, right?
I can, yeah, I can definitely go back and look through the data. Like I said, we keep all that on a, a big tracking spreadsheet, and I'd be happy to go through those and, and maybe give you the top reasons as to why maybe they're not looking in, you know, in Saginaw or they've, they've decided to go elsewhere.
Yeah, I just need that as part of some data.
Some of it has been, just like we said earlier, it's just some of the developments just haven't been ready. They're not ready to go. We've got, we've had people that are interested in being here, but if that development's not ready to go, that's not, that's not something we can fix.
But that's a data one. We can see that then, right? Well, the biggest reason our company could work on, our development isn't giving development faster.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just real quickly to Councilmember Lawson's point, I think Keith could attest to this. The biggest problem, one is our development-ready pad sites that fit what the restaurants and retailers want. We don't have the supply right now. With the developments underway, we should have. To Councilmember Big Horse's question, a timeline, don't know, but the square is incentivized for sit-down restaurants. I would assume we would get LOIs soon there. Belt Mill, you've probably seen to the north, dirt's moving. The UCD development to the east. Once Blue Mountain Road is, is expanded, reconstructed, I think those sites will come into play. But, you know, I could give you several times when we've been close with, with prospects and a property owner just won't sell. You know, ultimately, it's a, it's a transaction. You need a willing buyer and a willing seller. And the city is, you know, we certainly can't control the, the sales price or the, that part of the transaction, which is frustrating, but we'll keep fishing.
Well, and I agree with Nick. I think that would be interesting information for the council at least to have, you know, so we know what we're battling against.
Yep, absolutely. And we can, we can put a, a little written update or a report together and, and share with you guys. Another, another big one is, is franchisees. There's a, you know, obviously a lot of franchisees in, you know, the, the national chains. So, that's sometimes a hindrance. Hey, we want to be there, but we don't have a franchisee for the area. If there's a way you can, you know, work with the city, or if the city knows somebody that's, that's a, you know, willing to look at new business opportunities, definitely put us in touch with them.
We've had that several times with, just to talking with Aaron about, you know, if there's a company that, they want to be here, but they, they don't have a franchisee that, that, for this market, so.
And could we also get a copy of this presentation because some of that text was too small to read?
Yes, uh, yeah, I know. It was even harder to read when I was on my, on my laptop going over it all, so.
Is it on the website? Okay. Any other questions for Kerry? All right, thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate the information. Great, great information and data. Item number seven, comprehensive plan update. For that, our friend Abra, welcome. It's been a while.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, glad to be here tonight. Nothing can bring in restaurants faster than planning and design, and Aaron and Kerry, of course. But happy to talk about the draft concepts and highlights tonight for the comprehensive plan. Nothing I present you this evening is final, so this is the final phase of the project. But tonight is our opportunity to talk as a city council, ask any questions you might have, give me any comments that you might have, so that we can incorporate them into this final phase of the process as we're writing the plan. So, my name's Abra Nussar. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. These are the plan elements that we're generally going to be covering with the comprehensive plan update. We call it comprehensive because it covers a lot of different things, like fiscal and economic vitality, which is some of the things that we were just discussing. Land use and design, mobility and connectivity, utilities, city services, and implementation and monitoring. So, going to run through these real quick. So, what is a comprehensive plan? It covers existing conditions and future forecasts to frame actions. It sets forth a bold vision. And last time I was here talking with you all, you approved that vision statement, and I'll show you that in a moment. It does also set forth policies, maps and data that guide the priorities, and it'll have an action listing of things that are actually actionable. So, sometimes plans will have very vague things that you will never achieve because no one knows how to, you know, actually make it happen. So, we, we take pride in making our actions actionable. We have done an entire set of community engagement. We have more to come in this final phase. We've had a project website that included the community survey at the beginning of the year, so going to talk about that more in a moment. We've had stakeholder interviews. We've been to the quilting group. Just this past week, Councilmember Copeland also attended the Saginaw Recreation Center Senior Group. We talked to them, just making sure that we're reaching out to all those different demographics, farmers market. We've also had a comprehensive plan advisory committee, of which at least one member in the audience is a member of. So, we've definitely done a lot to listen and make this plan together with the community. And we've also had two community forums, which were very successful in terms of the level of engagement that we got and the meaningful feedback that we discussed with the community. So, plansaginaw.com is up at this moment and has information about our upcoming event and also some existing, some documents in the document library that anybody can access at any time. It's got a twenty-four seven comment form, so anybody can submit a comment or question at any time. These were the top survey results. Not going to read through all of these, but top strength was parks and recreation. You see it there in the opportunities as well, because any strength is something that we can build on. A weakness, an opportunity and a threat is infrastructure. So, traffic, traffic, traffic. Very big theme in the survey, not, not necessarily the utility side, but traffic and technology and more related to that. And then, talking about restaurants as a weakness. Lots of demand for family-oriented amenities, family-friendly things, entertainment venues. And this is throughout the planning process, not just the survey. And sit-down restaurants, especially steak. We are in Texas, and people are very passionate about having a sit-down steak restaurant. And we know from COVID that if, if we have outdoor seating, it'll be even more successful. So, just being adaptable to the times is very important as we proceed. So, this is our crafting the vision framework, what went into the vision statement that you've already reviewed and approved to guide the rest of the process. And it really has intersection of three spheres. What we're deeply passionate about, what we can be the best at, and what will fuel our economic engine. So, if we're deeply passionate about something, but it's going to bankrupt the city, it's probably not something that we should continue doing. So, we really want to try to operate at the intersection of these three spheres as much as possible. So, here's that approved vision statement, which represented the recommendation of CPAC and what we all discussed last time. Also, not going to read through all of these, but we're deeply passionate about being family-friendly, so that goes back to the type of restaurants and entertainment that we've been discussing for the past bit here with the previous item. Parks, recreation and trails, it's a strength. It's an opportunity. It's something that people love, but we also want more of it, including some connections on the east side of town and maybe some park improvements on the east side especially. What fuels our economic engine? We talk a lot about the mixed-use centers and the new development coming in, but what about Saginaw Boulevard? It's our major to and through. It's got a lot of opportunities, a lot of challenges, but we'll talk more about that here in a moment as well. So, fiscal and economic vitality, we set forth on these market differentiators, what's going to set Saginaw apart from its neighbors. One of those things is location and proximity. So, Saginaw is near several key destinations, both on the recreational side, restaurant side, Bab's. And, you know, we can take advantage of those destinations in those, that proximity, even if they're not within the Saginaw boundaries. So, what's complementary to us as Saginaw is something that should be taken into consideration too with what's around us. There are exciting opportunities to blend parks and rec with the railroad and our heritage and events and programming. So, we talked a, a lot within the community about not just businesses that can be along the rail, but also events. So, like Grapevine has its Polar Express type train, and people are really excited about the possibilities of that. Excellent schools. So, even though the city does not, you know, control the schools specifically, the city's a key partner to the school district and the schools, and that's something that can improve quality of life and make it a more attractive place for businesses to come in. So, keeping that as a strength and being a strong partner can set Saginaw apart moving forward from other areas. And then railroad-oriented development. You've probably heard me say it before. I'll say it again. A lot of communities would kill for the railroad sightings that you have here. It is an asset. It's something that not every community has, and it is an economic development and programming opportunity. So, utilizing what we have, the big landmark of the grain mills, it just pops right out of the horizon or, you know, gives a sense of place, especially if you've never been to Saginaw before. It's something that creates that destination. So, this is not all of the actions that would be in the draft plan. It's just six of them to talk about this evening. Restart those quarterly merchant luncheons. It sounds like we might have started that implementation a little bit already with the event last week. And that's great. I love it when the plan starts getting, getting implemented before it even gets adopted. That's the best kind. Gateway signage, so that you know you're in Saginaw and you're leaving Saginaw. Or even if you're in Saginaw in the middle, like where we are today, let's brand that and make sure that people remember that this is who Saginaw is. Doing something with the old Saginaw Fire Station area was something that came up at Community Forum Two especially. There's some vacant land across the street, and city owns the property, and what could we do there is a big opportunity. Live-work, small business incubators. So, to the question about how we're encouraging mom and pop shops and local homegrown Saginaw businesses, very, very important to the community in terms of encouraging those businesses that are already here and that would like to expand, but also that entrepreneurial spirit that we know drives quality of life and so much in the commerce area. So, those live-work units and small business incubators that maybe have reduced rents and they could grow into another space are very successful. Want to pause here? I'm going to pause after each one. Is there anything you'd like to talk about on the fiscal and economic vitality realm? Okay, we can always circle back. So, land use and design, this is the existing future land use plan right now. Land use is not zoning. So, future land use plan does not have to match existing land use, and it does not have to match zoning. Totally different. So, it's a very important distinction that when we're talking about future land use, it's our vision for what we want to see in an area, even if it doesn't match what's on the ground. Needs to be realistic, but we can have a vision for something that's different. What we saw here is that we've got a big industrial core in the middle. How can we maybe diversify that a little bit? The area off of Blue Mountain Road is an opportunity, and mixed-use centers. And mixed-use centers were not specifically identified, like the Levon White property versus Belt Mill versus the square. So wanted to actually recognize them as mixed-use in whatever went in forward as the future land use. So, lots goes in, not only what's on the ground, but also geographical features. Where's the floodplain? How's that going to be interacting with the city? How are the roadways gonna function? And trails, and what's planned? What's, what's already going? So here's the draft future land use plan. We wanna move towards a more design-based future land use plan. So, in the old days, you would pick a parcel and it would be red and it had to be retail. Or it would be yellow and it had to be single-family detached. What we know is that a more diverse, design-based land use plan gives us higher revenue per acre and brings in the fun stuff that we wanna see. So the more we can match the market, the easier it is for those to come in. So, there, there's a lot of different categories here. We did differentiate the pink from the red, and, you know, we are showing the floodplains now as a future land use category, which is a change, because we recognize that Parks and Rec is important here, and we wanna keep that as an opportunity moving forward based on feedback. So here's that green area, really only looking for open space, parks, or, you know, ecological assets, maybe a little splash pad if it's integrated into a park, or something that's really key to the park and floodplain area. Existing neighborhood, oh, I should mention too, not all of these are public property. So some of these are HOA-maintained areas. Some of them are just leftover spots that are areas that really could be focused on for beautification, not necessarily a playground. So just keep that in mind. Existing neighborhoods, preserve and protect what we already have. So what we realize here is that we have a lot of existing neighborhoods in the city, and we really just wanna be consistent with what's there already in terms of look, function, and form. Institutional can be your, places of worship, daycares, and that type of thing, but really focusing on, you know, destination connectivity. Making sure that our trail system is connected, and we have sidewalks, and those institutional uses are working from a functional perspective. Neighborhood mixed use would be adjacent to existing residential areas and would be lower intensity, commercial or residential, but really have that sensitive transition to the residential areas. So that's the big difference between the red and the pink, and we need to keep that in mind, is that the red is not adjacent to single-family detached existing neighborhoods or is separated by a roadway, and those pink areas have more adjacency. So just a little bit more sensitivity in terms of intensity. West McLeroy Corridor, where we are now, is the purple and would have more of a Main Street-type feel, be more walkable, and have two-story maximum development. Saginaw Boulevard Corridor, very exciting opportunity. Don't let that picture scare you in the back. It is a maximum four stories. We did have this as a discussion point at the comprehensive plan advisory committee. It went all the way from one story to 10 stories to five stories and landed at four stories. So, just know that it was thoroughly discussed, and the view corridor of the mills was discussed as part of the factors leading into that maximum, that we didn't want it to be too tall. So here's an example of just something for fun, just a visual, not the actual business, but here's a before and a potential after on Saginaw Boulevard. It's a tech-stot roadway, so we all know that it can be challenging. But one of the things that we wanna do is start pushing the envelopes of imagination as to what Saginaw Boulevard can redevelop as in terms of office uses. That can be medical office up there. It can be all different types of live-work units, you name it. So depending on how you wanna design the building and how you wanna situate these things would determine the use. Eastern Gateway is that eggplant color on Blue Mound Road, and this would be the tallest area in the city, up to five stories tall. As you can see, there's no residential adjacency. It's very commercial in nature right now. So it represents a corporate campus-type opportunity, and it's off the interstate. So, just recognizing that function there. And then community mixed use is your square, your Belt Mill properties, Levon White, and can be mixed-use destinations, family-friendly amenities, all the exciting fun stuff that people are looking for in Saginaw. Railroad-oriented mixed use is the area east, east side of the tracks there that would capitalize off of the sightings and could be up to four stories tall. Modern spin on the existing industrial-type architecture and blend in with the grain mills and maybe some potential entertainment destinations as well. So here's a land use and design sampling. First and foremost, your land use plan needs to be followed with updated zoning. So, once the comprehensive plan's adopted, the city would need to kinda take a look at what areas are not conforming to the vision and talk about how you wanna approach that. There's a lot of ways to peel that orange. You can do it all at once. You can do it in specific areas. But that's the main action that needs to come from land use and design. Also, you can see Saginaw Boulevard Corridor and West McLeroy Corridor design standards. So, just recognizing that they, that is a whole process in and of itself. You need to talk to the businesses, talk to the property owners, and see kind of what their hopes and dreams are and get something that's really realistic. And a train-watching platform, maybe at the Saginaw Train Depot was an idea. Any questions on land use and design? Go ahead.
First of all, I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And good job of informing all the citizens in different ways about this. The land use and design, upper left-hand corner, update zoning and subdivision codes. This is, of course, the perfect opportunity to do that, because now we have a big, we will have a big plan, and we will see what needs to be changed, if anything. And particularly since we are almost built out. I think, you know, we need to really take a hard look at what vacant parcels, how they're zoned, and whether or not they make sense today. Because when those zoning designations are made, maybe many years ago, then things develop around them perhaps in a way that wasn't anticipated. So then that can make that particular piece of land being zoned perhaps not the optimal way. So I have thoughts, three different thoughts, about what I think might be helpful. And of course, you're the expert, and, you know, I just want these things to be considered. And that is, since we recently approved the rental, single-home rental on McLeroy, that did away with some neighborhood commercial that was already zoned there. So now, now that we will have all these residents, I think it's 163? You know, quite a few. Many more potential customers. That then that, those two ends of that big tract of land. One is office professional right now, and I think one is community commercial. And I think if both of those were changed to neighborhood commercial, the small-type shop would lend itself very well and would be supported more likely by the new residents and the existing residents, you know, behind there. That was one suggestion. Another one is if we have any isolated pieces of land that are zoned multifamily. If they are not a large enough piece of land to lend themselves to be a mixed-use development, I would like to see those multifamily tracts rezoned to something more appropriate. You know, the, the multifamily, we've already added quite a few in these mixed-use developments, which I am in favor of, because that does attract these businesses, because they do have these built-in customers. And they also include a lot of amenities that will be good for the city. But when we have a small piece that is not big enough to be a mixed-use development, and it is multifamily, that I don't, I don't agree with that zoning. So I don't know how many of those tracts we have. I think that was it.
And so if, if I can just speak to that, that portion right there. Part of the implementation of rezoning some of these areas to be consistent with the future land use plan, if that's necessary on some of these pieces, would be to determine what uses would be allowed in what districts. So, for example, the pink areas, right, the neighborhood mixed use. If we were to bring this recommendation forward, we would say, okay, neighborhood mixed use, you know, multifamily wouldn't be allowed, you know, unless it was a live-work unit or some, you know, you could specify in the schedule of uses what uses are allowed in the pink. And then for the other areas, if they were zoned multifamily and they were under, say for example, the Saginaw Boulevard Corridor designation, we could determine at that time in the zoning if we wanted multifamily on Saginaw Boulevard to carry forward, and what that, you know, pros and cons, and what the trade-offs would be and what that form can look like. So that zoning process really takes that vision to a more granular level. Did you have something?
Everything that Mary said. Thank you for helping me out there. To continue on with the multifamily. Again, when I saw through your report, I did not see anything that said, "We want multifamily more in Saginaw."
No, ma'am.
You know? What we did identify as a threat, as a problem, is traffic, infrastructure. As we all know, in February, Saginaw was hit really hard with the loss of electricity. Yeah, that's what we need to do to solve the problem, is bring more housing in, you know, so we can resolve that problem. You know, that seems counterintuitive to me. Yeah, boy, that was a shocker when you showed that four-story apartment living on Saginaw Boulevard. I do not think that's what the citizens want, and we've dumped a lot of money into finding out what the citizens want. And I think we need to respect them because they pay their taxes here, and we need to give them what they've asked for, not what we think is best for them. I don't think we need to go with multifamily for that very reason. And this is like the fifth type of survey that we've done, and not a one of them has said anything. We need more high-density housing. But yes, I agree with Mary. We need to take advantage of what green space we have left to give the citizens what they have asked for, whether it's family activities. Something that a lot of people I've talked to is the, what do they call those things?
Main event?
No, no, not, not that. They can go across the railroad, where you throw the baseball and you hit the baseball.
Batting cages?
Batting cages, thank you.
This is fun. Give me another one.
Okay. And a lot of people have asked for that, that I've talked to. I mean, I'm out talking with people all the time. I, I go to the park. You know, they wanna keep the playground equipment that we have. Because, why? Because it's unique and nobody else has it. And I know we're spending a lot of money on the paint at the Aquatic Center that's supposed to be waterproof and weatherproof and all this other stuff. Why can't we apply that to the playground equipment we have to brighten it up, make it look better? Those sorts of things. So I think we really need to explore those types of things in more detail, rather than just, you know, throwing a bunch of shiny new objects out there for people. You know, what do we have that we can improve on, you know, type of thing? And I think all of that lines up with what you have in this presentation, which is phenomenal, by the way. You've done a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And to your point, you know, we're switching from a greenfield development context to now of an infill and redevelopment context. And with that, you know, it is time to start looking at what we have and how can we preserve what we like and just make little cost-efficient enhancements to things to prolong the life of things that we treasure. And then also redevelopment areas, so not just the areas that are greenfield, but maybe they're being underutilized, or maybe they're being utilized for something that's regrettable at the moment. So, and to your point on the rendering, the conversation was, what if, you know, we just used our imagination and put something that was going into the square, Belt Mill, right here instead of? So it's purely experimental, but your comments noted. Thank you. That was done by Madison Graham, for the record. Madison Graham. Thank you. What a perfect segue for me to keep going. And we will, we will talk about that, because a plan is only as good as its implementation, right? So this is our existing Master Thoroughfare Plan. What we just saw here is that there's some opportunities based on how the roadway system's functioning to maybe add some of the roadways to the network just for illustrative purposes and if we do start redeveloping these things. But also adding new connections and seeing where we can add to and through, as I call it, to address those traffic needs. We can't necessarily fix the train, but we can fix certain things in our mobility network. The top priority of the community is recreation, not commuter delay, commuter delay, but recreation. So people are very fond of the recreational opportunities here. But what we see in the trail network is there's just a few little missing segments, especially on the east side, that if we put those in, would add tons of connectivity to a wider system. That can be really exciting. So this is the draft Master Thoroughfare Plan. It is kind of hard to see on the PowerPoint. There are hard copies over here if anybody wants to see closer. And all of you have hard copies. But some of those additional twos and threes have been added to the Master Thoroughfare Plan. Wanna point out a couple of those here. There is a new connection going from, ooh, now my eyes. I think it's, yeah, Redding, Redding Road up to Bailey-Boswell on the east side of the tracks. It's, it's yellow, so it's kinda hard to see there, but that's some additional connectivity. And then wanted to point out the Levon White property here. In your packet, it shows a different configuration than what's on the PowerPoint right now. And we did that intentionally so that you could review two different options. And it's mainly about Western Center and what happens with Western Center. So in this option here, Western Center goes down into that blue dot, which is what we're calling a special consideration intersection. That intersection hasn't been designed, not necessarily gonna be a roundabout. You can see that the overpass is a blue one as well. That's not a roundabout. What we're saying is it's a special consideration intersection that probably deserves some design look. So Western Center would come down into that intersection of McLeroy and Levon in this option. And we're also showing conceptual street grid that is, would be on the Levon White property that connects north-south and east-west. In the other option, Western Center would punch directly through to the west and tee straight into Levon. So there are some pros and cons with each. What you see on the screen is the more historical option, what's been talked about for a long time. So that's, that's what we're proposing this evening. But if you have thoughts on the matter, I'm happy to discuss that once I get to the end of this section here. Another thing is the Greenway arterials. You can see on Basswood and Longhorn Road that we've designated a new roadway type called a Greenway arterial, where we're recognizing that we have more pavement than we need. And for that reason, we would design enhanced landscaping, maybe some bike facilities that are separated from the cars. There's some opportunities to do something exciting, since the traffic counts now and in the future, don't really mandate that level of paving. So that's just a couple of highlights here. We can circle back to any more questions that you, oh, there's Belt Mill and Square Network has been added in, in new connections also. So, here's our mobility and connectivity sampling. Connect those trail segments to play into the larger network. Continue to discuss the solutions for Saginaw Boulevard signal timing. This is big. City has already started these conversations, but the signal timing... City has already started these conversations, but the signal timing, we recognize, has some areas of opportunity that could really help the congestion, especially along Saginaw Boulevard. Feasibility study for a grade-separated crossing, a bridge, if you will, and overpass at McElroy and the railroads. Big idea, but it's what's come out of the feedback. We have one up north, and doing a feasibility study. And if it says it's too expensive, it's crazy, then, you know, you've chased it down, and you've done that feasibility study. But are there other options that aren't as expensive, and that could maybe help some of those things? Update the capital improvements plan by 2023. And I'll go ahead and leave it at that, instead of reading through all of them. Any comments on mobility and connectivity? Okay, can circle back. Utilities, resources, and energy. We don't have all our stormwater infrastructure mapped right now. So mapping storm sewer lines, and enhanced drainage ways, so that we can adopt creative stormwater filtration standards, as we approach more infill context. Incorporate rehabilitation of roads, water infrastructure, and sanitary sewer infrastructure in older areas of the CIP, so not just focusing on newer areas of the city. But as we're starting to switch to that redevelopment context, looking at substandard lines that maybe could use some improvements. And then exploring costs and logistics with burying the overhead lines on Saginaw Boulevard. Any questions, comments here? Recycling, too. Big theme that came up.
So amen to the burying the, the overhead line, so I know that's very expensive. Well, can you explain the one in the top-right corner about recycling services? Don't we already have recycling?
So, yeah, the, the comment there that we received several times, through multiple different venues, is that residents would like to see commercial and residential recycling improvements, either offered by the city, or in partnership with a private organization, including enhanced brush and bulky item pickup.
That's funny, that's the topic I was going to hit on.
Perfect.
I know that several residents from the Mariposa have requested recycling program over at that complex. And they said that, from what I understand, talking with Waste Connections, that that has to be decided on by the property itself. And their concerns is, you know, they've approached the property managers, and there's just no interest, but they still want have, they want to have sites to be able to drop off recyclable materials.
And for a requirement like that, you've got two different categories. One is new things coming in. You can actually require that they provide recycling and trash facilities, or the pad site for both enclosures, especially in multifamily. But retroactively, it's a different ballgame. And you can either offer minor incentives, or those types of things, carrots, to get that interest for the recycling side. Okay. And city services and facilities. So talking about moving things around, and allocating staff for Saginaw Parks and Recreation Department, talking about the pool and stuff earlier, it's kind of those same discussions about having a city events coordinator. As we talk about the events that we're already doing, and more events adding to that, it's a, it's a lot of work, just to arrange sponsorships, for example, is a, is a job in and of itself. But that would be kind of a, a new way that citizens would like to see that Parks and Recreation topic supported. A splash pad on the east side of Saginaw Boulevard. So lots of comments about, we need stuff on the east side of the tracks, not just the west side of the tracks. And you can see that bottom-right action of creating a park master plan for Little Fossil Creek Park, too. We named it, doesn't have a name, but, you know, Willow Creek Park, and it's along Little Fossil Creek, so, you know, we just kept the theme there, so maybe y'all will change it later, but. And then a Public Works and Animal Services building, not necessarily together, but just exploring the location and design of both those facilities. Anything here?
I was shocked that Willow Creek Park came on here. That, you know, it's there, it's the biggest park we got, and it needs, to me, it needs a lot of work. To me, I look at it, and I see over in Keller Bear Creek Park. I could see that being a Bear Creek Park, if we put our mind and resources towards it.
Yep, and I know that's been a topic of conversation at the Park Board, as of late. And there's a Parks and Recreation Master Plan being prepared at the same time. So I think some of those conversations lead to enhancements at Willow Creek Park as well. But happy to take any feedback.
And Brack has $4 million to play with as well, right? So hopefully some cool things are going to happen, right?
I just wanted to emphasize the importance, in my view, of the upgraded staff, you know, to not only alleviate, you know, the overwork of some of our staff, but, you know, make a, you know, better quality of life for our residents. So I know that's a big ticket item, but if there's any way we could do that, I think it would be great.
Okay, thank you. All right, so last but not least, implementation and monitoring. So exploring partnerships, what kind of financing options do we have? You're going to have a prioritize action plan with short-term, midterm, long-term, and conceptual level of cost, once the draft plan gets posted for review. So that's part of your game plan for success, right? What does success look like? Your prior, your plan should be updated every three to five years, if you're experiencing growth. You will have lots of new residents by then, but you're looking at that five-year timeframe, now that you're approaching redevelopment context, unless you get something major that happens. And you can kind of keep up with your comp plan amendments, if there's something that needs to be tweaked. But we really just encourage that updates and amendments, you know, follow more of a comprehensive process with public input, and kind of how the overall planning process is approached. So happy to talk more about implementation questions that you have, but really, it's that prioritize action plan. We, we're not going to give you, you know, 75 actions and say, here, have fun. But, you know, short-term, midterm, long-term, based on conceptual level of cost. What's the low-hanging fruit, biggest bang for your buck items? And part of that is updating the zoning. Okay. All right, so next steps. That's tonight, City Council III, and then Community Forum III is coming up, so October 26th. We have a Facebook event that people can mark themselves going or interested to, so that it reminds them. You can also preregister on plansaginaw.com, there's a link there. You don't have to preregister, it'll just send you a reminder, so that's kind of handy. And we're going to be going over this presentation. So anybody who hasn't seen it yet, we're, I call it kind of a traveling roadshow. And we can still change things, but it's that opportunity that someone can sit in their pajamas at the house, or whatever, and ask a question. And we're going to have a panel of the consultant team and city staff, and our, one of our CPAC members here tonight, to serve on that panel, so that we can get those questions answered live. And we'll post the recording of that afterwards. And with that, happy to take any other questions or comments that you have tonight.
Other questions for Abra?
I mean, I guess for the general one. I've seen a lot of-
Nikki, Nikki, could you put in the mic in front so we can hear you?
I've seen a lot of plans. How do we start executing to some of this? How do we start getting into our yearly budget, and, you know, take something like this, you know, pick up the shovel and start, start working towards it? I mean, I see a lot of things in here, like the one was like 2023, to even start talking to our businesses. We should be doing that next month. I mean, why, why can't we? I mean, so I, I'd really like to see even more of a plan. Okay, here's, we got a recommendation for us up here, we approve it. I'd, I'd really like to see, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three. You know, next year, we're going to pour 100 feet, 10 feet, or 1,000 feet of these sidewalks to connect the parks, I mean, things like that. And what's the price going to be? That's what I'm excited about and wanting to see. You know, let's, let's get on with it.
I like it.
Mr. Mayor, one question, Abra, are you available to hire? You just want to be a city staff person?
You know what, I am happy to serve you as your consultant.
Oh, okay. I just thought I'd throw it out there. To, to answer your question, Councilmember Lawson, I think, I think a lot of the nuts and bolts go in the, the work plan projects, and, you know, you as a council decide what's priority for the year. We just start checking things off the list, piece at a time.
But really do look for that action matrix. Just for you, I think what some, what could be handy is if we sort that action matrix, and you can see all the short-term actions together, and then all the midterm actions together, and then all the long-term actions together. And you can kind of look at that short-term section and say, okay, is anything, can some of these wait? Or, you know, maybe do we need to move some of these midterm ones up? And we definitely welcome that kind of comment when the plan comes out. But our goal is to have you be able to check things off, and really make progress towards your vision.
Yeah, I think that would be awesome.
Four stories on Main Street.
He's, he's after that rendering. He's going to lease the first unit.
All right, anything else? Any other questions, Costini?
Yeah. I know, was it two, three summers ago, we had the Citizen Summit, and we came out of that with the strategic plan, I think that's what we called it. How does this, and this may be a question for Gabe, rather than you, how does this plan mesh with, and align itself with that strategic plan and your work plan for this year?
Sure, so, um, we'll do a workshop and identify some potential projects, and existing projects on the current work plan that will be carried over, for one reason or another, and decide what your priorities are, and pick projects and, and go get them. So we can't, like Abra mentioned, we can't do it all at once. We'll pick the plan, or the plan will identify some different timeframes for different projects, and then we'll keep going a piece at a time.
And sometimes, a helpful distinction, too, between a comprehensive plan and a strategic plan, is that strategic plans are often used to guide the city as an organization. And the comprehensive plan is often used to guide the city as land, and as people. So I'm not sure if, if that makes sense for the context that you use it for, but.
Sure, like, give you an example, you know, we talked about potential rezonings. That could be a project for next year that we look at, identify parcels, you know, talk with property owners, that sort of thing, so.
Well, I'd like to, like I said, I'd like to see how this aligns with that strategic plan that we came out of with the Citizen Summit.
Sure.
And this plan as well. I mean, I realize that some things have changed over time.
Well, they're two separate plans, right? But the projects from the comprehensive plan will go into the strategic plan, in the work plan each year.
And we need to make sure that, you know, we're still accomplishing both of them.
That's a fantastic point, and I wholeheartedly agree. Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else for Abra?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Great work. All right, moving along. Item number eight, at 7:43, we're in a public hearing. And item eight is to search an action regarding a request to amend portion of the plan development for the square, approved by the council on April 16, 2019, combining tracks two and five, track 2A. For that, Rick Trice, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We had a lot of discussion about the square tonight. This is a, another piece. 2019, you adopted the first plan development on the square. Part of that included several tracks more toward the west side of the development, near Old Decatur Road, that was designated as multifamily. There was one parcel that was, actually had frontage on the, that would be the southwest corner of the development, that had the option of either being multifamily or community commercial. We have a developer come in that, that wants to amend that PD to combine those three tracks, the northwest, I mean, I'm sorry, the southwest corner, old track two, and what will be lot three, out of the final plat, which is the small parcel that's located north of Saginaw Boulevard, into one new track, 2A. Now, I've attached at the dice there, the attachments to the ordinance. Bren has, has completed the ordinance draft itself, but these are the attachments that contain the development standards, and the exhibits that show the, the boundary of the plan development. The, the development standards are essentially the same as what was approved in the original PD for the square, except in the way that the density of the multifamily is calculated. And so, you know, density would typically be the land area, or the, the number of dwelling units that were proposed divided into, or by the land area to get a dwelling unit per acre percentage. So the standard for MF2, which is the underlying zoning under this PD, is 24 dwelling units per acre. What the developer proposes in this particular case is that the tract north of Saginaw Boulevard will remain vacant. However, it will be used in the calculation of density for the area that's south of Saginaw Boulevard. Typically, that's, would be a contiguous track, but not the case in, in this case. So they're non-contiguous, but, and Bren can chime in, but certainly acceptable legally. So I'm also going to amend staff recommendation. We're recommending approval of the PD amendment, but I have talked to developer representative here tonight. We're also going to stipulate that the small tract, lot three, north of Saginaw Boulevard, would be subject or required to have a maintenance agreement, formal maintenance agreement, executed with the city for perpetual maintenance of that, that tract, which is really reserved for open space, and also potentially used for drainage or even additional detention for the square. So I think it's, we have representatives from the developer here, if you have any questions about the development itself. I think the plan is for that northern tract across, on the north side of Saginaw Boulevard, to be an amenity that would serve the apartment complex. So with that, I'm going to stop there. If you have any questions, I mean, and certainly, like I said, developer's representative is here also.
Council questions?
Why do we want to put more people per acre? What's, what's, what's the benefit of making this change?
We are-
Can you just say your name, please?
My name's Henry Kohan, I'm sorry, I'm representing the applicant for the case. We're not asking for any additional density, we're not asking for any additional people. We're just asking for a reallocation of the density from the north side of the site to the south side of the parcel. There wouldn't be any more people than there already is allowed in the PD.
It looks like there's 230 people currently, and you want to, for the 9.57 acres, and you want to put 261?
Well, that's instead of-
In the nine, moving them from track three to track two.
Yes.
That's, you know, that's still a higher density, as far as I'm concerned. I know it's the same number of people in that same whole area, but now you're moving them from here to here.
Yeah, and the reason why we're doing that is just from a management perspective. One, having people on the other side of the road is going to be not as desirable. And then, two, just from a traffic standpoint, with the public road going through, just to mitigate traffic by having people placing a building on there is going to, could cause more traffic. And then, number three, our amenity spaces are going to be on the south side of that public road. So just from like a safety perspective, to have residents who would be crossing, isn't necessarily as safe. So we just think it would just be a more cohesive apartment community, to have everything on the south side. And we would dedicate that north side as open space for residents, and we'd maintain that, as well, as Rick mentioned.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I might add, there's an adjacent property owner that, there may be potential in the future to have an open space that would be a public amenity. You're aware of the, the church there, there's a pond. That would be some of the rationale, although we don't have control about the adjacent property owner. But to his point, it's about open space.
Well, and since you opened that door, I want to tag on to that. There's also an open-spaced detention area, just to the east of this, of the lot three, that together with this lot, and then the church property on the north, there's an opportunity for a much larger open space, and potentially, you know, public park-type open space use, so. So, uh, that hasn't occurred yet, so we haven't had those conversations, but there is a potential for that to happen.
Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Okay, so you're looking at track three, but you're talking about track two, but then you have lots four and five, lot three.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to make sense of it.
On the preliminary plan, I, I guess Gabe had forwarded a memo that I prepared just explaining some questions that Councilmember Lawson had. Yes, track two, track two in the, which is the zoning tract, or two A, I should say, is comprised of lot four, lot five and, and lot three from the, from the proposed plat. And I attached the preliminary plat, so that's the boundary of track two A. The actual lots, you know, when, when they come in for development and we're calculating density, we would look at the actual platted lot. So, uh, I think I described that the, the difference between the acreage and the track, which is the summation of those three lots, the difference is the right away of, of, of Saginaw Square Boulevard, excuse me.
Yeah, we can't plot it as one lot because of the public road going through.
So, um, so what is track four? What's going in there?
That will be multifamily.
No, track, track four.
I'm, I might be looking at something different than you.
Let me make sure.
Can we pull up a picture? Can we pull up this?
Track four is to the north and east of track two.
To the northeast of track two.
It runs along sign. Well, because it says lot five, lot four and five. So there's a mix-up in the data that was sent to us. So we have track four that runs north of Saginaw Square Boulevard and east of Old Decatur.
Okay, so you're interested in track four? What's gonna happen with that?
Yeah, so what's going on?
Track four is, still falls under the PD that was approved previously for the square. So it would be, uh, I believe the use is defined under that PD where a community commercial.
So it's not apartments over there?
I thought that was like medical offices and some things like that on that area if I recall.
I don't have the, I don't have the previous PD in front of me, but, uh, I believe it was.
Restaurants as well.
I believe it was a community commercial.
Is it the track off of Saginaw Boulevard?
No.
It's on Old Decatur?
It's the one off of Old Decatur.
Okay, yeah, that's community commercial. We're, we're not in control of that site.
Right.
And then track one is all commercial. Is that correct?
Correct, I believe so.
Is what you're planning on putting in there? That's the one that runs west of Saginaw Boulevard and Saginaw Square Boulevard runs through the middle of it. It's on the east side of the property.
Track one from the previous PD was having frontage along Saginaw Boulevard and that is all community commercial. Those are where the incentivized restaurant pad sites are.
There we go.
So basically you want to cram more people into track two.
Instead of.
You're bringing people out of track three.
The allowable density on track two is two hundred and sixty-one units, but instead of putting, placing a building north of that public road, we'd be putting it south. But like, we're not, we're not asking for any more density. They're not asking for any more people.
I will say this, that track, track two, the way it's defined to that in, in, in the proposed PD.
Okay, so you're not talking about track three?
No, I think we're just talking about track two. I can't tell.
No, yeah, just, just track two is the subject of this PD.
Okay.
Or two A, proposed two A.
That's why I'm, I'm so confused because you know, we're, you have tracks and lots and.
Lots of numbers, yes.
So everything that's on the north in that track two block that's north of Saginaw Square Boulevard, you're wanting to pull back down?
Yes.
So you're gonna make it denser on the south side of Saginaw Boulevard, Saginaw Square Boulevard?
On the south side, yes.
Why?
Management, traffic, safety. Well, no, it's not. It's really not money. We could, it doesn't cost us any less to build it on the south side as, as the north side. It's more just functionality.
Somebody makes money off of it though, because you got more people.
But we would have the same amount of people if we were to place the building on the north side.
Mr. Mayor, I think the easiest way to remember is we want all the people south of Saginaw Square Boulevard and to the north of that to be reserved for future open space. The one point seven acre that they have control of would be dedicated open space. And then it's the hope in the long term to get that, um, potentially get that property from the church that could be a future public park. Very simple. People, park.
Yeah.
No, the density's staying the same, but they're moving the people.
The number of dwelling units will stay the same.
You're putting more people in a smaller place, in a smaller chunk of land is what you're doing. Is that correct?
Technically, yes, that's correct.
Because that's twelve point four acres and you're moving that down to nine point six acres. You're moving thirty more families.
South of the road.
That's all I wanted to know. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Are there any other questions for the gentleman?
Yeah, since Gabe, since you opened the door there, I hadn't even thought of it and you mentioned it. How do we, I mean, because that's, if they have it, it'll be their property. Is there, are you, are we entered in some contract or some agreement that eventually if you get the property up there by the church, we can turn that into park?
Yeah, so, uh, probably two years back, it was a direction from the council to, um, uh, do a land, do a survey and appraisal of that property, which we did. Uh, we shared that appraisal with the property owner and said, we're interested for a public park in obtaining it. Another benefit that the city could provide would be to extend sewer service. So right now the church has a septic system which has issues and, um, again, private property owner, we can't control that. Although I think the mayor at TML, um, one of the leadership in the church there happens to be a council member in Lake Worth. He had mentioned that the church leadership was interested in potentially selling that or at least talking. So the doors open, we don't control it. Um, I, I, my own personal opinion, but I think that they, now that they see the work, the infrastructure work, the street going in, they realize the development's coming, so. Yeah. I, I, I hope that, uh, you know, it can work out because it'd be a really nice public park and, and open space.
No guarantees, but we've, we've at least got moving in the right direction.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, other questions, comments, concerns? Um, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'd like to invite the, the public, the honest to speak if you so choose. It is a public hearing. You do not have to fill out a form. You can just approach the microphone. So anybody has any questions, concerns, comments, now's your time.
Those thirty new units that'll be going in on the south side of Saginaw Square, is that gonna go up? Or are we gonna take away more green space from that nine point six acres? So you're going up? You're gonna add more levels to the top of the apartment complex?
To the top of the apartment?
You're gonna add like, it's gonna be like three stories instead of two stories?
We're not adding any additional levels.
So you're gonna have smaller apartments?
It's gonna be three stories.
You're gonna have smaller apartments? What you gonna do to get those extra thirty units in that same amount of property?
We're not gonna have any smaller units. Our architect designed it in a way that we can be at, be at around the same unit plan that we're under, that we're measuring before.
Okay, in my mind, that doesn't calculate.
I might, I might say some, have some information that's helpful. If, if they don't specify the, the, the square footage of the different one, two, three-bedroom units, then it defaults back to the zoning ordinance for MF two. So, uh, for that zoning, the minimum floor area for a one-bedroom is six hundred and fifty square feet. Two-bedrooms, nine hundred square feet and three-bedroom is a thousand square feet. So those are minimums.
So we're gonna stay in compliant with what the PD already allows. We're not gonna ask, we're not asking for any smaller unit sizing.
So you'll have more single bedroom units than?
It's not gonna be, it's gonna be as the PD describes. We're not gonna deviate from that.
But you're adding thirty more buildings, or thirty more units to that area. I'm just trying to figure out where they're gonna go.
The site plan kinda shows it, but, um, like where exactly is that, are we placing that building? Are you asking where we're placing the building?
No, I mean, you're gonna have to put thirty units somewhere. So you're either gonna take a, I mean, they're either gonna have to go on top somewhere, on top of the apartment complex. They're gonna have to, you know, take some two-bedrooms away, make more one-bedroom apartments. You know, I can only put so much ice in this cup, you know, and trying to put another half a cup of ice in here when it's full. You know, something's gotta give. So I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to envision.
The way it was prior design, the way it was designed prior was three-story walk-up with, um, consistent with the PD, with the minimum square footage requirements and the unit mix requirements. Our architect has told us that we can stay consistent with that, even with the technical additional thirty units on the south side.
Let me ask a question. I draw state people and that's the way I look at things, sorry, how it is. How many units are you gonna have in there before you move the, the piece of property you're talking about down?
The same, two sixty-one.
So, Mr. Mayor, the zoning allows for a maximum density per acre, which is not changing. The zoning does not dictate how many of which unit, uh, you know, we want this many three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom. The site plan, the architects dictate that. So what I think we're doing is kinda racing around in a circle when the question at hand is before you, right?
Well, we don't have that picture.
You don't have that picture?
We don't have that picture. Not in our packet.
Can we all look at it together? I really don't understand why we're.
Go.
The, uh, at your dice, I put the attachments to the zoning, through the ordinance to the PD amendment and that picture's in that packet.
Oh, yeah. It's on the last page.
Okay, Gabe, just to make it simple. So where it was gonna be, it could still have two hundred and sixty-one units quote. If they move it down, it can still have two hundred and sixty-one units.
That's absolutely right.
Okay, so what is the two hundred and thirty for then? To a smaller acre, Jeff.
Correct, because that northern tract will be open space. And as you mentioned, it's not their preference to have a standalone unit across the street. Just keep all the people on the south side and the park and open space on the north side.
There's sufficient space. The architect drew it so it could fit. I'm not sure exactly which building they played, where they, where they placed that building, but they're able to make it work.
So like you have this public open space on the far west side of that tract. You could put them there. The thirty apartments.
It's already shown on the site plan. That's including, that's two, that should be two hundred and sixty-one units on the site plan.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. So we, we still have open space.
Okay.
Cessini, where are you getting the two thirty, or two thirty-one number from? I know, but the total is still two sixty-one.
The site plan should show two sixty-one.
Total on both is two sixty-one. Total, total's two sixty-one, total two sixty-one. Yeah, it is. It's two sixty-one equal two sixty-one. There's nothing else. They're just, they're just, they're just moving the thirty units from lot three to lot four and five. So the total number of units is the same.
I know.
Exactly.
But I wanted to know where on lots four and five they were moving the units from.
But we're, we're not, we're not upping the unit, total units. Is that your question? The total number of units are the same.
Total, yeah.
But you're putting more units in a smaller space.
Yes.
And I didn't know.
Which is gonna be an additional amenity for residents that we'd be maintaining ourselves.
But we weren't given this to look at until right before the meeting.
Oh, we have it now. So we got it now. I hope this helps, helps understand, um, makes it a little clearer.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to do is understand what's going on and make sure that we had plenty of space for people so they're not sitting on top of each other. I mean, we, we went full-blown safety for COVID and I just want to make sure that, you know, as we start packing more people in here, that we continue to keep our citizens safe.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mary. Go ahead.
I think for practical reasons is why this is being done. You know, to have all the people on one side and then the possible future park. So I think it makes sense. And I believe the thirty extra people or, or units, it will just be a mathematical calculation of, okay, maybe we had fifty thousand square foot units. Now maybe we'll have forty-five. In other words, you're gonna play with the square footage and be able to fit in the thirty extra units by changing the square footage of the.
Of the units?
That's not, so.
Yeah, we wouldn't be changing the square footage of the units.
So are, they're gonna be physically thirty units added physically?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But there's room on, there's room physically to put them there.
Correct.
And it will result in thirty more units?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
I was just, we were just pulling up the original PD ordinance that was adopted.
You're moving a retail restaurant and putting from track.
From.
Two, two to four, right?
Yeah, but in the, in the PD, it allows for multifamily.
For both.
Yeah, sure. That's where you're getting the space. That, in the bottom, bottom left-hand corner, you got a retail restaurant, that's gonna be apartments now. That's basically where you're getting your space, okay? That helps. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you, Rick.
It just didn't make sense the way it was presented to us at all.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to be a pain, but you know, it's our responsibility to do what's right for the citizens.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
All right, so, um, as I mentioned before, it is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishes to speak. Um, I want to make sure you got a chance. Speak now or, or hold your peace, as it were.
Mayor, I neglected to say that PNC did consider this last week and unanimously approved.
Gotcha, understand. All right, any, any, any citizens wish to speak? All in, all done? Any other council comments, questions, concerns? If not, eight oh eight, I will take us out of a public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, which is approving the amendment to the planned development for the square, combining tracks two and five to track two A planned development MF two as described and to also include a maintenance agreement for track three.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Moving forward, item number nine, to search an action. Consider this an action regarding approval of replat for lot five R one and lot five R two, block one, Burlington Industrial District, number two, addition revised. Elijah Meredith's survey. Rick Trias. Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope this is simpler. Uh, this is a replat of, um, again, as you described, this is really to serve the, a Foodliner development that'll be off of, uh, Dyfel Road. Uh, been having conversations for several months, trying to find a site in Saginaw that fits. It's about a thirty-five acre, or thirty-five and a half acre replat. Uh, the smaller lot, uh, lot five R one will be used for the Foodliner development. I've placed some information at your, at your dice, uh, some colored pictures of, uh, of what the project would look like, and we have representatives from Foodliner here tonight if you've got any questions about that development. The staff recommends approval, and, uh, P&amp;Z considered it last week, and unanimously recommended approval.
Counsel questions?
So is the total size of, the total size of this, um, this, um, property is gonna be that thirty-five acres?
There's two lots being created. It was previously lot, uh, planted into several individual lots, and so with this replat, they just created uh, the smaller lot, which will be the Foodliner project, and then the remainder of that tract.
Five R one is gonna be the lot for the Foodliner?
Yes, council member.
And then the other is?
Just undefined at this point. There's just the remainder of the tract.
They own this?
Excuse me?
They own the other, they own the other lot too, or the...
Foodliner doesn't. I believe it's the, um...
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. I was just wondering what was happening to the second lot?
Yeah, that Jarvis Partners, uh, two, Limited Partnership is the owner of the entire tract, but at some point, it'll be sold to Foodliner, the smaller lot.
All right, counsel, any other questions? If no other questions concerned, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the consideration act regarding approval of replat for lot five R one and lot five R two, block one Burlington, second addition revised as presented.
I'll second.
All, all those in favor, raise your hand, raise your right hand. Opposed? Most opposed? Thank you. Uh, item number ten, consideration action regarding amendment one to the development agreement with Fuel City Saginaw for intersection improvements. Again, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, you approved a development agreement with Fuel City. Uh, Fuel City has been instrumental in getting a, a, I guess, federal money and state money for the improvement of the industrial and Blue Mound road intersection. If, if you drive that, you know that portions of that are in really poor shape, and then, uh, access around that intersection is, is really hampered the way it's designed today. So, uh, that has been authorized as a, as a project, uh, through the North Central Texas Council of Government, uh, COVID-nineteen infrastructure program. Uh, that will require that the city, uh, enter into an AFA, which is also on tonight's agenda, the next item, number eleven. Uh, it requires that we enter into an agreement with Fuel City, because Fuel City has taken the lead and has become, uh, offered to be responsible for the design and the environmental clearance associated with Tech Dot clearance process. So what this, what this, uh, developer agreement or development agreement does is bind them to, uh, to, uh, perform those services. Uh, we in turn, on the next agenda item, will enter into an AFA for the state that allows them to go forward with the design and, uh, environmental clearance process. Um, so you see some of the obligations in the future for the city. Some of those are undefined at this time. Uh, there will be interlocal agreements that'll be required with the city of Fort Worth, the city of Blue Mound, and in addition to that, Tarrant County has stepped up uh, with the funding commitment also applied toward the project. So, uh, this is just, uh, to use council member Lawson's term earlier, kind of uh, unpeeling the onion, uh, to find out what all the, the answers are for this project. Again, some of the costs are undefined, the right-of-way cost and the utility, utility cost, so, uh, but this allows that project to move forward to the next step, which is design and environmental clearance. And you see the, uh, again, those are the developer, uh, Fuel City's obligations. In addition to that, they commit to dedicating their required right-of-way for the project, uh, free of charge to the city, provided, uh, we go forward with our commitments. So, with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Rick? Just wanna say how thrilled I am that Fuel, Fuel City's gonna take a run point on this, so we don't have to. I think that's a, a good, uh, step for them, and I know it's, it will im- improve their business a lot, but I'm glad they're taking some of the...
I think it benefits the traveling public, and also Fuel, uh, QT, which is across the street from Fuel City, will also benefit. So there are, uh, there are a lot of benefits to this ci, this project, and it also allows us to leverage funds for a much larger project with state and federal and, and Fuel City, uh, participation, so.
Yeah, driving through the intersection, it, it needs a lot of work. They need some love, so this is a, a need, much-needed project.
Is Blue Mound gonna participate in this as well?
The plan is, Blue Mound will have a proportional share, uh, and, and that is where Tarrant County comes in. If Blue Mound's unable to enter into that interlocal agreement, then their funding will probably be covered by the county.
And where will our funding come from? Or, yeah.
We, we have funding that was previously authorized for the, uh, certificate of obligation, I think four hundred thousand that we have set aside for our share of the project, but again, that's still an, an estimate. Uh, some of the costs are undefined at this point, or five hundred thousand, yeah.
Any other questions concerned?
Do we have any idea when, uh, this project would start? And again, are we being, would we have delays to look at due to, uh, construction material availability?
Uh, this is going through Tech Dot, so, you know, my prediction is twenty fifty, I think. But, uh...
Can we lock in this price then?
No, nothing's locked in until the project goes to construction, but, uh, but, uh, Fuel City is, uh, and, and Scott Young is here, he's representing Fuel City. Uh, they are pushing the project as fast as they can, but still, it has to go through, uh, Tech Dot and federal process for approvals, so. So your guess is as good as mine, I guess, is the answer to the question.
But I'm not looking for you to guess.
Are there council other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consideration act regarding amendment number one to the development agreement with Fuel City as presented.
Mayor, Cindy, Cindy second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Most opposed? Great, thank you. Thank you, Rick. Hey, thanks, Fuel City, appreciate it. Good work. Uh, item number eleven, consideration regarding execution of an advanced funding agreement with Texas Department of Transportation for advanced funding agreement for the service transportation block grant, et cetera, et cetera. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. Rick Trice.
This is the second half of that, uh, of those agreements that I just described. Uh, this AFA, uh, again, advances its design and environmental clearance portion. Uh, again, utility and right-of-way is undefined at this time, so there will be likely uh, an amendment at some point in the future to add those costs in and, and, uh, as we define the project further. So, staff recommends approval.
So we know we have partners with this, so it's good we're not footing, uh, footing the whole, entire bill. Uh, we just don't know what that bill is quite yet officially.
We, we don't have core interlocal agreements in place yet, but Fort Worth has prepared one, uh, for their share, and, uh, and then we have a rough estimate of what the city of Blue Mounds, uh, is. And again, that may be an agreement with Tarrant County instead of Blue Mound, but...
Sure.
Uh, we have had conversations with Blue Mound management and, and, uh, so it, they may have an interlocal agreement with the county to receive the funds to enter to an agreement with us, so a little bit of a complicated weave, web we're weaving there, but...
That's okay.
Mayor, this is, this, excuse me, this is an eighty-twenty grant with the federal government picking up eighty percent of the funds. The locality's only contributing twenty percent towards an over three million dollar project. So, as Rick said, we're, we're leveraging very few dollars into a very good project.
Oh, good point, thank you, Dolph. All right, council questions?
What do we consider the life expectancy of this, uh, improvement? Twenty years, fifty years?
You know, most, most pavement sections are designed for thirty to fifty-year design life, so something along those lines. Depends on, depends on repetition of heavy loads and...
Unlike McIlroy?
McIlroy's, uh, should have a decent life. McIlroy was a maintenance project, okay, so it, it's not a, it's ultimate pavement section, so.
Are there other questions? Counsel? Another question, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consideration act regarding execution of an advanced funding agreement with Texas Department of Transportation as presented.
Thank you. Cindy, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Excellent, thank you, Rick. All right, item number twelve. Item twelve, I have a conflict of interest, so the mayor prosser will run this item.
Okay, so, at eight nineteen, we're gonna be in a public hearing, consideration action concerning the deletion of a collector roadway from the master thoroughfare plan located parallel to and immediately east of Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad tracks, from Bailey-Boswell Road to East McIlroy. And once again, Rick at your hand.
Thank you, Mayor Prosser. Um, in two thousand and eighteen, shortly after I got here, we amended the master thoroughfare plan to add this north-south collector roadway, a forty-foot roadway, uh, is immediately, uh, east and parallel to Burlington Northern's, uh, eastern tracks. Um, the purpose for that addition was that there was lack of north-south circulation, uh, essentially from one end of the city to the other, but of course, we have the National Guard, uh, property, uh, south of McIlroy, so, uh, this would have connected or provided circulation from McIlroy up to Bailey-Boswell Road. Um, in, in looking at that, uh, and, and I've talked about some of those issues in the, in the, in the cover memo to the council, uh, the, the alignment of that roadway is a very difficult alignment to, to, to build. Uh, it has many challenges, terrain, uh, close proximity to residential neighborhood, uh, it crosses FEMA floodway and floodplain, so there would be bridge structures involved. Uh, probably, probably, uh, section four oh four, the, uh, uh, Clean Water Act permits with the Corps, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, in addition, there are conflicts with existing development that exist, uh, at its terminus, that McIlroy existing buildings that were in the way of the alignment. Uh, of course, all of those, uh, are not insurmountable. It's just money, it's cost, cost benefit. Uh, the thing that brought this to, uh, a little bit of a head was that on Spring Creek, uh, subdivision, just to the east between the railroad tracks and the subdivision, a industrial development has come in, uh, for proposed development, zone industrial, already heavy industrial. Uh, so this roadway impacted that site. It's a long, narrow strip of land, impacts that site such that, um, it, it would render that site undevelopable, as, with, with the dedication of a sixty-foot right-of-way for this collector. So, uh, it becomes a potential taking, uh, damages to the remainder of the property, where we would have to perhaps purchase the entire property. So it really brought that to a decision, uh, to either continue along that path with the, with the collector or to, to remove it from the thoroughfare. So, uh, there is still a need for north-south circulation through that corridor, and I think, uh, ABRA shows, uh, the master thoroughfare plan, that at least showed a portion of that collector, uh, you know, toward Bailey-Boswell and down to the, to the south end of Basswood Crossing, uh, as an extension, but then it would terminate there. Uh, staff's recommendation is to remove it at this time, uh, and then we would reconsider it with a comprehensive plan. Um, the Plains Zoning Commission considered this item last week and unanimously recommended approval of the, of its removal from the NTP. So, if you've got any questions, I'll try to answer those.
Counsel, any questions?
So, so there's no current plan then to resolve the, the problem of us needing a road to, to connect that up?
I, I think that the attempt has been made in the, in the thoroughfare plan that's been, uh, that, that's a draft, in, in its draft form now, in the comp plan presentation that you saw earlier.
Yeah.
To at least, uh, make connections that would allow you to finally get to McIlroy, would not be a straight route. Uh, certainly, the straight route would have been desirable, but, but the time and place for that to be on the thoroughfare plan really was probably thirty or forty years ago before any development occurred, or, or we're not to the point that we are now, so that you had a more, uh, conducive corridor, if you will, for a roadway construction. Uh, if you've ever driven that route, you can drive it, uh, to see kinda what the terrain and what the grade elevations, I mean, there's sound pollution, et cetera, et cetera. So lots of environmental issues associated with the alignment today, whereas had it been put on the thoroughfare plan twenty, thirty years ago, uh, you know, we could have planned around it and had development, you know, planned forward adjacent. So, I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Yeah, best as it can.
Best I can, yes.
So basically, this corridor was supposed to be used for like, uh, semi-trucks and things, industrial vehicles?
Well, it would serve primarily the industrial, uh, base in the center there, but there are lots of residential, again, like I said, uh, base, Basswood Crossing and, and, uh, Spring Creek subdivision uh, is along that corridor, as well as a lot of floodplain.
But once one fifty-six is developed, do you think this will alleviate some of the traffic and the congestion?
I don't think it was necessarily, although it would provide some relief to traffic, but I think the, it was just for convenience to, uh, to get, for the industrial traffic to get from one end of the city to, to, you know, from Bailey-Boswell to, to McIlroy. So, certainly, that, that was a worthy, um...
Cause I could just see this becoming another Jarvis Road.
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, that's, that's not to say that we would preclude, prebe, precluded from doing some other alignment, uh, that we have looked at other alternatives uh, in, in just a kind of a cursory way, but, but, uh, I would recommend that if we do a future alignment, that, that there'd be some sort of a cost-benefit analysis and, uh, and a feasibility study, just to see what all, because I, I don't know what the price tag would have been for this roadway, uh, but I can promise you there would have been a great amount of sticker shock, uh, associated with that, so, but, uh...
So what about the, that business? Do we have plans to, to try and put them somewhere else, or if we don't have, if they don't have that land, they're just...
If we, if we delete the, uh, collector from the thoroughfare plan, then it, then there would be no requirement for them to dedicate right-of-way for a collector. That's, that's what the issue is for that property. Um, so yeah, that, that issue goes away.
So this is a public hearing, so if anybody in the audience would like to speak, you're welcome. Could you please state your name?
Patrick Farr, two thirteen Dominion Court. As most of you know, this, uh, this collector was a brainchild of mine, and I must admit that blocking development in this light industrial area was not what was intended in my mind at the time. So I wanted you to hear from me, that I do believe that rerouting the roadway so that it is on the north side of the future potential Little Fossil Creek Park will reduce the cost of installing the road. It will cause the need to have to negotiate for right-of-way, connecting into the roadways to the east, that's gonna create a future problem, but I think it is important that we solve the problem at hand now, so that we can develop some industrial property. Uh, that industrial property will generate some ad valorem for us to build the road in the future. But I do think it's important for the council to seriously consider the road, leaving the road intact, potentially leaving the road intact from Bailey-Boswell to the turnpoint at Mitten Road, where Mitten Road intersects with it. That way, that right-of-way is preserved for now, and the balance of it can be worked out in the future. That's what I had.
Mr. Farr, can you show me what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Where's McIlroy?
This road comes down, it's up here, and you can see Mitten Road is here. That's where Mitten Road intersects. So the road, uh, I need a far reference. My road...
Twenty or thirty feet above the grade.
The proposed NTP up on the screen? Oh. Is that the proposed? It's hard to see what does work on the screen.
Patrick, use the mouse and...
Oh. So here you can see Minton Road where it crosses the track. And what I'm suggesting is that council consider this right-of-way remain to Minton Road, and then the balance of it be removed. And then this future roadway that will connect here be considered in the future. And the reason for that is there is an area right in here that is sensitive to the school district, and we do not want to have that discussion today. They don't know how that elementary school or how that middle school configuration is going to be, and that discussion needs to continue with the school district. But I would strongly suggest that we remove the southern half immediately so that we can free up the land to develop the industrial core.
So your proposal is not affecting the industrial?
It does not affect the industrial proposal
No, it doesn't.
as it is today. All it does is preserves the right-of-way to the north of Minton, which would allow for a connection from Minton Road up to Bailey-Boswell, which is a very important connection entering the back door essentially for existing industrial core between the west main line and the east main line.
I would say that staff has no objection to that. I think that we could add it to the draft master thoroughfare plan and the comp plan, and I think that's workable.
You're okay with this then?
So if we get out of public hearing and give a motion, do they need to add that?
Or does it need to change?
As what you presented.
I think that the motion would be amended to say that we would delete the collector roadway from Minton Road south to McIlroy.
Okay, but looking at the cover letter, looking at the cover letter that came with this particular item, it says the roadway alignment has several issues that makes its feasibility questionable, including close proximity to an existing residential development, FEMA floodplain, floodway encroachments, probable mitigation due to impacts on wetlands, and an existing conflict. Okay, so...
About ninety percent of that goes away with this amendment.
The industrial part goes away, but it looks like there's still problems with the residential area.
There would be some, there would be probably some sound mitigation or barrier that would be required along the roadway, so that would, how we would treat that. But again, the ninety percent of the issues that are mentioned in the cover memo go away if we terminate at Minton. So we don't get into the floodway, we don't get into the floodplain, there's no bridge, you know, so I mean, there would be some minor encroachment at the north end of the floodplain, but...
So can we table this with the new development? Study it a little bit more instead of making a hasty decision right now?
But if we change it...
Well, I'm not sure that changing it's the right thing.
I would say this, that we were adding it to the draft master thoroughfare plan and the comp plan, so there would still be public hearing to consider that new alignment in the future.
So the suggestion today is to open up the development opportunity. The longer that this is tabled, obviously, the longer that development opportunity is pushed back.
Well, I understand, but rapid decisions are not the way to go either.
A rapid decision in terms of omitting the right-of-way?
I'm just...
I think the only thing that we're going to, I mean, if we go just delete the part that we were talking about, is that really going to make a big difference?
Well, I mean, I'm looking here, and I see that there are problems with the residential areas, and that's my concern. Do we want to keep them, keep those?
Mayor Pro Tem, so I just want to clarify with the recommendation from Councilmember Farr, that doesn't mean we're...
That's, sorry, Citizen Farr?
Citizen Farr, former Councilmember Farr, Pavlovian training. We're not committing to that future roadway at any point in time, right? We're just saying it's on in the future. Councilmember Big Horse's concerns, if the council chooses to go that direction in the future, it would have to be designed, we'd have to acquire right-of-way, go through the whole process, so that doesn't commit the council.
What I was trying to say was if we just delete what we talked about and save the rest of it, it's not going to change, and it's not going to hurt anything right now.
That is correct, and it would allow the proposed...
It helps, it helps.
Because we're not committing to anything else.
That's correct. It helps the issue, it allows the proposed development to come through the industrial.
I just want to make sure that that's clear. But like I said, I saw the concerns listed here, and I wanted to make sure that that is not going to be an issue.
Well, I don't think that those concerns would be right there, because we're not committing to anything else.
Well, we weren't going to commit to build a road anyway. We were going to get rid of the whole thing, and they were getting rid of it because of these reasons. So hanging on to that easement, I still had those concerns. Those issues are not going away. So that's why I was questioning the validity of this this change to the roadway.
So are you okay with us making the motion like this is?
I suppose.
So now at eight thirty-five, we're at, I'm sorry, did anybody else have anything else to say? I apologize.
Can you walk around? I want to see you. Don't you walk around. Okay.
Brack St. Clair, four twenty-one Creek Terrace. As much as I don't like the roadway being taken away, I do see the potential for the industrial to come in. I live in the neighborhood that is right down there, so most of the people in my HOA are not big fans of the industrial that's proposed to come in. I wish we had done something better in the beginning. We'd planned something better for that. I think there would have been better uses for that. But as it stands now, I guess the question I have for Rick is, by eliminating this right-of-way, does that allow the building to occur farther away from the residential?
If the item were still on the master thoroughfare plan, if the alignment was still there, then the building would not develop. They would be, have insufficient parking to support the building of that size, which hundred and twenty-eight thousand square, is that right? Two hundred and thirty-seven thousand square foot warehouse. So what we have done is, and we're still, you know, in conceptual stage, but there was a railroad spur proposed to tie into the railroad, and so what we're trying to do is align it where the traffic, the truck traffic, et cetera, would be on the railroad side away from the development, away from the residential area.
Okay.
And so the warehouse would back up, and there would be a buffer. There's a natural buffer now. There's, I believe, a Tesco right-of-way that separates that tract from the neighborhood. So trying to mitigate the impact, they can do it by right. But again, if the thoroughfare doesn't go away, then they would either walk away from the project because they couldn't develop if they had to dedicate that right-of-way, and that's where the taking issue becomes, you know, an issue, that we would be somehow potentially liable for a taking.
How much revenues this is going to bring into the city, since we're talking about this, and since it is, it sounds like it is impacting some of our citizens now.
I think...
I'm more interested in...
In terms of ad valorem tax value, maybe you could talk a little bit about what the value of the warehouse is?
Hi, I'm Doug Johnson with Falcon Development. We're the developer of this property. We have our contract. So I should have probably got up here earlier. So we've got the building facing the railroad tracks, so that means all the truck traffic will be on the railroad tracks. The trailer park, or the trailers and stuff will be on the railroad track side. If you didn't take this track, this street out, we'd have to turn the building around because we'd use that now for our, basically, our fire lane in the back. And now it makes the building face the residential, which you don't want to do that, or at least a truck's face residential. So there is a hundred-foot buffer from, I don't know what's, I think, where it's, it was Tesco. And then we've got a thirty-foot, a twenty-five-foot fire lane between us and that easement, and then the building, and the building again faces towards the railroad tracks, and that's where the dock doors are. This is a twenty-five million dollar project. I'm not sure exactly what your ad valorem taxes are here, but generally speaking, combined tax rates is usually about, you know, three per hundred, and that's county, city, ISD, other stuff, you guys, emergency vehicle stuff. So it's, whatever, it's probably around six or seven hundred thousand dollars of total added form taxes, and what the city is is probably a billion, I can't figure that, probably a third of that. So anyway, it's... Pardon me?
Hundred seventeen thousand.
Uh huh, okay.
Can I play by mine? Sounds a little bit...
That's just the city's portion, yeah.
So hundred seventeen thousand is going to create jobs, obviously. It's going to be a very first-class industrial project that's, I've developed these for thirty years. If you're familiar with Alliance, I've done ten or fifteen buildings up there north of Texmore Speedway. So again, it'll be a Class A building, it'd be one of the nicer buildings out there, so. It's going to spec buildings, so it's hard to say with three hundred and twenty thousand square feet, you know, maybe fifty to a hundred jobs. I can't promise anything on that. I can promise a day, because that's about it. And the intent is we'll close next, if this goes through tonight, we'll close next Tuesday, start design, and it's already zone industrial, so this takes us to the design stage.
Any other questions?
Is there anything we can do as we're designing this to ensure that we minimize, put sound barriers up for the neighborhood?
You're going to have a fifty-foot, forty-five-foot tall building facing the residential area with a hundred feet.
Okay.
Everything occurs on the other side of that. There'll be a fire lane, but there won't be a lot of activity at all on that side of the building. Won't be at all.
You good with that?
Mayor Pro Tem, just one quick comment. I know it's getting late, everybody's getting tired. We had preliminary conversations with the project applicant about open space dedication. So there's some floodplain land there that would be potentially a part of Little Fossil Creek Park, formerly known as Randy Newsom East Side Park. So that's the initial thought. Yep.
Do we have any more questions or concerns? Okay, so at eight forty-one, we're going to go to public session, and I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I want to give the motion, but I'm not exactly sure how to make the motion.
You just have to say it like it is the deletion down from Minton.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
I make a motion that we follow the recommendation for the deletion of the collector roadway from, is that industrial, industrial to Minton?
From McIlroy to Minton.
McIlroy to Minton, from the master thoroughfare plan. It's located parallel to and immediately east of Burlington Northern Santa Fe railroad tracks from, well, Minton to McIlroy.
I'll second.
Charles will second. Everybody four, raise your right hand. I need to get the mayor back.
Did we lose the mayor?
I know. He's back there drinking coffee, probably.
What number was that?
Item twelve?
Thirteen.
Too much coffee.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We're on item number thirteen. Consideration acts regarding Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five setting a public hearing under section three hundred, three eleven dot oh three of Texas CACO for the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone containing approximately two hundred and ninety-five acres. For that, I guess initially Bren.
All right, so I have about a forty-slide PowerPoint. Let me just get it loaded up.
That sounds great.
Anybody want any coffee? Okay, so this is the first step in establishing a tax increment reinvestment zone. We're required to publish at least seven days prior notice in the newspaper of a public hearing. You all are familiar with the concept of a TERS. It essentially captures the increase in value over time of ad valorem taxes, not just the cities, but any other participating unit of local government, and puts it back into a pot essentially to be used for improvement of whatever is in the project plan recommended by the TERS board, which you appoint, and ultimately with final approval by the city council. Now, I know you all received some correspondence anonymous that raised a number of legal concerns and essentially legal challenges. I provided a step-by-step rebuttal to at least the legal issues. I wanted to throw it out there to see if anyone has any lingering concerns about the legality of this process. And then I know Patrick is here. We also have a representative from P three, which is the city's consultant for assisting with the management operation analysis of financing plan, project plan, et cetera. So we're here as a resource. I didn't, it's getting late. I'm happy to do a step-by-step of how you create a TERS, but really, the purpose of this item being under my name was to address the legal allegations made in that anonymous letter.
I just have one question. When we start the TERS, as Gabe, when he first explained it to us, the tax amount, he said, was when they build out, when they, the people, the residents that come in and they buy the houses, that's when it gets, okay, and then an anonymous said that the TERS actually starts with, when the person, when the development company buys the land at that amount. Which one's true?
It's the appraisal of the land itself. And anything, and it captures the increase in value from January, if you create this year, from January first value, ad valorem value this year, to each subsequent year. So it's not necessarily triggered by a sale. It's triggered by the annual appraisal of the property.
Okay, so like if it's two point one, I'm just using an example. So if it's two point one million right now, the only taxes that we're going to give is that amount, two point one million, tax that amount?
That's right.
Even when they put houses and everything on that?
No, no.
So it's going to increase. That's why I'm confused.
So a couple of things that Bren mentioned, and Kyle's here, if can weigh in as well. When we create a TERS, you set a base level a year, so all the properties in the TERS boundary. Now, the TERS that we have recommended is non-contiguous, so there's several tracks. The biggest which is Belt Mill would include Miss White's property, the industrial property that was just talked about because of the park implications, globe aviation, future redevelopment potential. I believe that's everything. So all the taxable value? Yep, that's right. That's the exhibit. So those are all the properties. Whatever their taxable value is, January first of this year, that's our base value. We've proposed that it's fifty percent TERS, which means fifty percent of the new value that's created goes back to the general fund, the city, and then fifty percent stays in the TERS district. Tarrant County has said they would match participation at the level that the city participates. So fifty percent of taxes from Tarrant County that would otherwise go to the county to fund, you know, precinct four activities, criminal justice, that sort of thing, we're keeping and would pay for things in the TERS boundaries, as well as TCC. So the benefit, like Bren mentioned, is we're capturing taxable value that we wouldn't otherwise have. It's important to set the base value a year before you know there's development because that way your increment, your increase is bigger as it grows.
Did we, we haven't had any discussion about that. I don't know if P three has any thoughts on how long, based on the cost of the project plan, et cetera?
We can set that. We have to...
That's right, you set it.
That's correct. Council, Council, of course, P three works. Typically, on a TERS project, you see between a twenty- to a thirty-year term. Thirty-year is more typical what you see. But again, the TERS board and the city council, when you approve that project and finance plan, will have laid out all the... you approve that project and finance plan, will have laid out all the projected project costs and the timeline that those costs will be incurred, so we will be going through that process and identifying those specifics as we move forward on the, onto the next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And the ISD is not involved in this at all?
So the ISD is unlikely to participate. Now, they haven't told me no, but it affects their state school funding if they take any of their increment and contribute it towards the TERS. So they're unlikely to be legally entitled to participate. However, i, if, if, if they do, they're only entitled to one seat on the board. If they don't, it's discretionary for the council to decide whether, if and whether to appoint any school representatives to the TERS board, which will come to you.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because there was some discussion about the possibility of an auditorium, that we would be in, involved with the sharing costs. And, you know, in that instance, I mean, it's not exactly school funding, but I didn't know if that would be one of the exceptions, that they would be able to contribute more towards that.
So I believe, and I'm a, I got my law degree from a cereal box, take that with a grain of salt. I believe in nineteen ninety-nine, and Bren outlined this, previous to nineteen ninety-nine, school districts could participate in TERS as a contributing taxing entity, but after that point, due to their funding, they would be double penalized. So it would impact their funding. Not only would they lose the taxable value, but the state, whatever crazy formula, Robinhood, it, it penalizes them for participating. So essentially, school districts do not, since nineteen ninety-nine, participate in TERS throughout the state of Texas.
And, and any TERS that you see where a school district is participating, they're essentially grandfathered. If they participated prior to nineteen ninety-nine, as Kyle mentioned, these can go up to thirty years potentially, so there are still some TERS districts that involve school district funding, but those almost universally involve grandfathered circumstances.
Yeah, I would not anticipate them participating in the TERS. They'll participate other ways if we do do an auditorium, but not in, through the TERS. So it's gotta be us and the county, basically.
And just one quick thing, you know, you might wonder, well, why would another taxing entity give up tax dollars, right? Or why would the city wanna do that? It's to encourage development that will create more value. So without the TERS funding, then raw land or certain parcels wouldn't develop on their own. Good example would be the Globe Aviation site. You know, there's remediation there. At some point in the future, we'd love it if somebody came in with a development proposal, but it's, it needs a lot of help, and it would be potentially eligible in TERS.
And just a reminder, so unlike a PID, which assesses the property owners annually on top of the ad valorem taxes, a TERS is not going to change the ad valorem tax bill for any property owner within the TERS boundary. It just takes what they would already be paying and puts it in a, a pot to be spent to improve essentially their area.
And when the TERS is over, just curiosity, if there's still money in the pot, where does it go? I'm just asking, I don't know.
Right, so if, if everything is satisfied, then the, you would just terminate the TERS. So you, you can, you can dissolve the TERS if all of the debt that's anticipated has been paid off. That's typically what happens.
Council, other questions? This is basically step one. This is a, a multi, multifaceted step process, so. So if we approve this tonight, then we'll have to advertise, and we will create the TERS at the next council meeting, is that the plan?
That's correct, and then P three would take that to the county for county participation at commissioner's court. We've run that by our commissioner, J.D. Johnson. They support it, and their policy, I believe, is they'll match whatever the city participates at.
Okay.
Yep, good point. And TCC matches county participation, so fifty percent of, of both those taxing entities.
So we, we've talked to TCC, and they're amenable?
Uh, their policy is they follow Tarrant County, so.
Tarrant County does it?
Yep, so, uh, first step is county commissioner. County commissioner was good, and, yeah, they'll match.
On our taxing, the only one that's not gonna participate is the school system, right? Basically.
And the hospital district.
And the hospital district, yep. The hospital district doesn't participate by policy because they had a recent bond program, they're paying bond improvements, but, yeah.
Other questions, concerns, or counsel? If not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-five, calling for a public hearing on November second, twenty-twenty-one, for the creation of a t, tax increment reinvestment, containing two hundred ninety-five point forty-four acres of non-contiguous land, generally located north of Bailey Boswell Road, north of McElroy Boulevard, and west of Saginaw Boulevard.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Charles Beasley, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right. Okay. All those in favor? Okay. All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, Bren. Item number fourteen, consideration action regarding Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-six, authorizing the city manager to execute the global opioid settlement documents and adopting a Texas term sheet. Again, Bren, Mary.
Okay, so, Mayor and Council, I'm just gonna provide generally a, a broad, high-level review of this. So the various state attorneys general and various other political subdivisions have filed suit against a number of pharmaceutical companies over the impact that the addictive opioids have had on communities. They have since reached a settlement with four companies, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Amerisource Bergen, Cardinal Health, and McKesson, and the settlement provides for Texas to share twenty-six billion dollars of payments over eighteen years. And each state is required to secure a minimum threshold of units of local government who have opted into the settlement in order for these companies to agree to settle, and that's because they want to try to avoid parallel lawsuits being filed by cities, counties, et cetera, and they wanna try to resolve as much liability as they can. So the Texas Attorney General is taking the lead for our state. You simply need to opt in. The only drawback to opting in is you waive your right, Saginaw waives its right, to sue these pharmaceutical companies itself, which I don't recommend, obviously. But you opt in, payments will be made over eighteen years. It's based on a per capita basis. The state's gonna be divided into four quadrants, essentially. Fifteen percent of the total pot that Texas will receive will be distributed on a per capita basis over the eighteen-year period to units of local government. As I say, there really is no drawback. It's a, a resolution that once it's signed, I will provide to the Texas Attorney General's office, and it, it's going to take some time, but the settlement funds will be dispersed to Saginaw and various other cities, and we're, we're doing this for all of our client cities.
Is it really worth it for us to do this compared to the cost of, you know, legal fees, and are we gonna get any money out of this, or is it gonna cost us money to do this?
We're gonna, we, we are anticipated to receive money, yes, and it will not cost anything.
I want my thirty-nine cents, yeah.
I, I couldn't tell you how much money, but candidly, you, the city will not be responsible for any of the legal fees incurred in pursuing this settlement.
Well, if we're looking at, what, one point seven billion, I mean, right here in Tarrant County alone, there's forty-one cities, and we're looking at fifteen percent of one point seven billion, doesn't, and you spread it out over eighteen years, yeah, thirty-nine cents, is it really worth this?
It, it, it should, it, it should be in the amount of perhaps less than a hundred thousand, but it's money that you would be entitled to, that you would be declining if you did not participate.
If I understand correctly, if we don't accept this, then the only reason we wouldn't accept it is if we was going to try to sue these companies.
That's correct.
I know suing companies that that size is gone, you're gonna spend millions-
We're not gonna do it. I mean, th, this is free money that would go to other cities if we don't take it.
That's right.
Essentially.
That's right.
So would it-
It has to be used for a set list of opioid response, so-
Something from the police department?
Police Department, the, the, I can't recall the name of the drug that is administered when someone is OD.
Narcan.
Narcan, and it, and it can be used for the cost of, you know, first responder's time, if you can calculate and allocate how much time was spent on opioid response. So it, it, it's not unencumbered, but certainly has a use.
So we're looking at a hundred thousand dollars over eighteen years? Not a hundred thousand dollars for eighteen years?
That's correct. That, that's the estimate that I saw in the Texas term sheet, and I can get you the estimate if you'd like.
And, and I, I know, I mean, it's a lot of money for a person, but, you know, for a city, I mean, still, that would cover the pool expenses. But, I mean, could this money, okay, so it says here in this letter that seventy percent will be paid into the Texas opioid abatement fund managed by the Texas opioid council, used for opioid abatement programs. Wouldn't that money be better there than here? I mean, what's, what was-
They've decided-
What could we use this for, chief?
I mean-
Mayor and counsel, um-
Five thousand dollars a year, we're looking at?
Uh, one of my favorite city managers, we happen to live in the same house and share the last, same last name, she's working in Bartonville, little small city in Denton County. They're getting eight thousand dollars through the settlement, they participated. So I just had a brilliant thought at a late hour. I know we had talked about potentially a narcotics dog. I would guess that would be ineligible use. Any amount for public safety that we get, even though, to your point, it's, it's minimal, would be well-received.
Your nonsense may be overstating it.
Yes, Mary?
Uh, oh, I attended the seminar at the Texas Municipal League Conference earlier this month on this very subject, and there were two individuals from the Attorney General's office, and that money, we can actually use some of it for retroactive costs, retroactive expenses that we have already spent, I believe, back to the date of the settlement. This, we can also be reimbursed for illicit drug use. Even though it's an opioid settlement, you can also be reimbursed for any, any money that was incurred as expenses from the city for dealing with illicit drug use in the city. The more, the more entities that join this lawsuit, that will generate a larger amount of money that is given to our state, and there's really no downside. Any amount of money that we get from this will be better than nothing, and it will be way more than, you know, a paltry sum. So, you know, I, I, I was convinced without a doubt that this would be the way to go. So.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, I'll, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consideration and action regarding Resolution number twenty-twenty-one twenty-six, authorizing the city manager to execute, execute, excuse me, global opioid settlement.
Nick, second. All those in favor, raise your hands.
That was beautiful.
All those opposed? Excellent, thank you, guys.
Before you adjourn, what is this?
Something for you to read.
Do we give these out to somebody, or a business, or?
Those are just samples of what's gonna be mailed out to businesses from the Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee.
Oh, I thought I was gonna give us a business an award.
You can give a speech if you want to, Charles.
I just wanted to look this up for that.
All right, thankfully, no executive session is required tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn Saginaw.
Charles, second. All those in favor? At nine oh five, we're adjourned. Thank y'all.